Call the meeting to order. The first thing is to review and approve the agenda. And I don't think there are any changes to the posted agenda. Does anyone have any information different than that? Okay, great. All right, so moving on to general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to comment on any topic that is otherwise not on our agenda. And if you would try to keep your comments to about two minutes, that would be great. Also, say your name and where you're from. And so I'm going to look at Cameron here and see if anyone is raising their hand or otherwise indicating they'd like to speak.
So if you would like to speak, you can either unmute yourself and start talking because we don't really have a queue right now, or you can use your raised hand or a reaction emoji, and I will find you and call on you.
Oh, Bill.
Just quickly, I know we're going to have a formal conversation with our legislative delegation, and we will welcome them all as that, but I thought it would be fun to welcome two former mayors to our meeting tonight.
Oh, you beat me to it. Yeah, it's delightful to have you. All right, anyone else? Jack, I think you are muted. Still can't hear you there, Jack. I'm going to assume that we should probably move on unless, Jack, you can jump in later with whatever comment you want to make.
He just said he has to text me, he has to call, and he thinks he's having some trouble there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Is his mic turned up?
Okay, well, whatever he needs to do.
He's working on it, he'll try.
Okay. All right, so anyone else? Okay, all right, so moving on. So we are on to the consent agenda for today. Is there a motion regarding the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? In favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the consent agenda passes. And so now we are up to welcoming our legislative delegation. So thank you each for joining us here. I know your names are displayed here, but I wonder if we could take just a second to have you each introduce yourselves, and then I'm going to turn things over to our committee, our legislative committee, and let them take it away. But if we can start with some introductions, that would be great. Maybe I'll just, I'm just going to call on folks in the order that you all appear on my screen. So I apologize if that's not the same order that it shows up for you. But so I guess we'll start with Senator Ann Cummings.
Been out of practice. It's been a whole week since I've been on Zoom. It's a privilege to be here, and thank you for having us. I'm one of the former mayors, so it's always good to come home and see how the city is running. Seems to be doing well, but looking forward to an update.
Great, thank you. All right, next up, I have Representative Mary Hooper.
Hi, y'all. It is great to see you. Like Ann, I'm feeling a little rusty after, we were looking at our Zoom statistics the other day, and I hate to tell you how many thousands of hours we have logged in the past couple of months. So anyway, it's good to see you. I'm not sure what you're looking for in terms of an introduction other than a hearty hi. Just as a reminder, I serve on the House Appropriations Committee, and I'm also on the Joint Fiscal Committee. And in the off-session, I'm not sure when that is, I'm on the Joint Justice Oversight Committee, and I know that you all have some interest in some justice-related issues. So I look forward to talking with you all about those interests. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And actually, I think that's really helpful to have that context of what committees you're on, so I'm going to backtrack. And yeah, Ann, would you tell us what committee you're on?
Yeah, I chair finance, which deals with property taxes, which may be of interest. And then I'm on health and welfare. Those were the two longest, most hours in the Senate logged on Zoom, so I now know why I was tired. I also chair joint fiscal, and we're doing a lot more than normal this year in the way of approving COVID grants and staying on top of things.
Great, thank you. All right, so next up, I have Senator Anthony Palina. Welcome.
Thanks for having me, appreciate it. It's always nice to see you folks. I look forward to actually seeing you in real life with these days. I serve on government operations and agriculture, so government operations, as you know, does a lot to do with local communities, municipalities, and we did a lot of dancing around to try to make it easier for local government to function during the pandemic. But it's nice to have the opportunity to talk with you guys for a while.
Great, thank you so much. And so next, I have Senator Andy Perchlik.
Hi, thanks for having us here. I'm the newest senator, just finished my first term. I was served on transportation, and we could talk about some transportation projects in the city, and then also I'm on education. I have to say that it's pretty good for Montpelier to have two former mayors, Montpelierites, on the Joint Fiscal Committee. It's almost as good as Danville having each chair of the Appropriations Committee, but that, so Montpelier will now have its.
They've got an even tighter connection than our former mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks again all for being here. I'm going to turn it over to either Connor or Lauren or Dan, yes. So yeah, take it away.
Great, well, I can kick it off, and it's great to see everybody. Thanks so much for coming tonight. You know, we were seeing you on Zoom instead of at the State House. We started this legislative committee just a few weeks ago, had our first meeting, and I think really we want this partially just to be an introduction, and hopefully the first of many opportunities we can invite to the council, just get an update on what's going on, and try to keep our thumb on the pulse of the State House as much as possible. You know, certainly, I think the big things we want to talk about are, you've seen yourself, we recently cut $1.2 million out of our city budget there with the rescission plan, some very difficult choices we had to make. And I think, you know, we see the big numbers coming out from state government of, you know, where are the money going, what's going to businesses, what's going to workers? And I was hoping, you know, maybe we could have a bit of a discussion about what opportunities exist for maybe Montpelier to tap into some of these resources, and what we should be doing to advocate at this level in the State House, just with the last few weeks of the session coming up here. So I think an update would be great of what's on the table, what's coming. The other thing I'd love to hear is, you know, the one thing I think we have a responsibility to advocate for is the charter changes, and the one that comes to mind is, you know, the non-US citizen voting. We had citizens in our town knocking doors, getting petition signatures, really working at a grassroots level to get this over the finish line, get it on the ballot. We had some success in the House getting it passed. We really feel like, you know, it might be a small number of people, this impacts, but it's very real and very meaningful to the non-US citizens in town to feel that connection to their community, and we heard from a few of them. So I guess would love maybe Senator Palina to touch base on that, too. And so that's what I would love to hear. I'll turn it over to Lauren and Dan if there's anything else I'm missing for tonight.
For my part, I mean, I think that's the big things, and really excited that you're here, and as Connor said, hope this is really an ongoing conversation, and we can kind of reignite more regular contact with you all and be in better touch moving forward. So appreciate your time and being here. I know you've been so busy. I think just one other issue that I know Representative Hooper mentioned was racial justice issues as well, which have been obviously top of mind for a lot of our community, have been an issue of a lot of discussion in city council meetings in recent weeks. So if there's an update of what the state's doing, and if there's a city to be playing in advocating for any of that, or in how we're moving forward with our own look at the police department and other systemic racism issues.
Yeah, Bill, go ahead.
Just to add on a couple of things to that, one specifically to do with policing, we know there was some discussion on where it ended up about requiring body-worn cameras, and I think generally our city has been very supportive of that, but there are some pretty significant costs associated with that, and also Supreme Court case about public records. So just wondering where that was at, and if what thought was given to dealing with those obstacles for local governments to adopt this. Curious where TIF legislation is, and I think, you know, we've got an article coming on. One of the very next items is a street closure for some rail work, rail siding, I think Senator Perchlik in particular had been involved in this, and now it's happening, and we may be incurred with some costs. So I don't know what we can do about that, but it just seems like sometimes you wonder who's looking out for the local interests and the public interests of some of these rail projects. So I don't know how we can talk through that. And last is talking about funding, you know, every, I would be, I would lose my municipal government membership if I didn't ask about, you know, highway funding structures and grants, because that is the lifeblood, not only for us but lots of other municipalities. So I won't get kicked off the league board this week.
Before we jump into responses, Dan, did you want to add anything from the committee?
You know, the only, the only other thing I would add is, you know, and I'm sure Representative Hooper and Senator Cummings, you remember this from your days in the council, we did come up with a legislative priorities list earlier on this year, and if we haven't shared it with you, we would certainly like to share it with you. It does sort of encapsulate a lot of what we've discussed between the four of us, as well as sort of the overall points that the city has as far as its legislative priorities. No big surprises, you know, funding, I think, can't be emphasized, given the sort of circumstances of where we are in the city, and the need, you know, as we face these budget shortfalls based on lost revenue and increased needs in some respects. But I won't belabor any other points, but I will echo the gratitude for the four of you coming tonight. It's really great to have an opportunity to connect with you as our representatives, and I think it's a great start to continuing this relationship. So thank you all for coming.
Great, so, and we can start with anyone who would like to jump in with a response or thoughts. Anthony, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I'll go back to what Connor said, because it's, it's an issue that, the non-citizen voting issue, charter change was, for me, a major disappointment. It was really hard to like see the Senate hesitate to do that. I mean, it's, it's, in government operations, we get charter changes all the time, and generally the feeling has been amongst the members of the committee that if a community decides to do something, who are we to tell them not to do it? You know, they wanted, they voted on it, they discussed it, they have meetings on it. Who are we to tell them they can't do charter changes? So we, they're almost a given that they're going to pass. This one just really got stuck in the Senate. We discussed it numerous times. We actually discussed it informally and formally. We talked about it at two different caucuses, went back, had a lot of back and forth about it. There were members of the Senate who felt that, I think what it came down to was that they felt that voting was a privilege that you get when you become a citizen, and you shouldn't be giving it away to people who are not citizens. It was just, I mean, I don't want to go on about it. It was just really frustrating, but we did vote counting on it a couple of times. We asked everybody how they were going to vote on it, and we were a couple of votes short. We talked about it at another caucus a couple of days later, and did the vote count again, and we, it just wasn't going to pass. We always turned out to be two or three votes short of passing it on the floor of the Senate, so rather than bring it up and have it be killed in the Senate floor, we never really voted it out of the committee. It was really, I was definitely disappointed. And as an aside to that, what makes me think, and I think it's something that you folks are also thinking about, which is, you know, more home rule or local control for communities. We did actually pass a bill, it might be S-106, I forget the number, but it set up a pilot program where 10 municipalities would be given the ability to do more of their own decision-making, for lack of a better way of putting it. There were still hoops to jump through, but it would allow you to make decisions without coming to the legislature all the time for charter changes. And that bill passed the Senate, and it had strong support in the Senate, pretty strong support, certainly strong support on Government Operations Committee, but it is now stuck in the House Government Operations Committee, there has to move it forward. So it's just interesting how these things, how you split these hairs. I mean, on the one hand, the House Government Operations Committee said yes to non-citizen voting, but no to giving local communities more power, and the Senate did the opposite. So I just wanted to mention that there is this bill out there, which is still in the House, which would allow communities to make more decisions without coming through the legislature as often as they do now.
Connor.
Anthony, that bill would be great if we got that over the finish line, I think. That would give us a lot of flexibility. Is there still an opportunity, would it make sense for us as a council to send a letter to Jeanette White there to ask for a vote on this, and in the next few weeks, actually pressure if it's just two or three votes with the Senate, try to get a vote on this?
You're talking about the non-citizen voting? I mean, I don't know what to say. I mean, it's six and a half dozen others. I think if you are inspired to write a letter to the committee and ask it to bring it to the floor, I'd say, sure, go for it. I think it's a long shot, because the leadership, certain members of the leadership don't want to bring it, don't want it to come up on the floor. So it depends on how you want to spend your energy. I mean, I was prepared to present it on the floor. I thought we were pretty close, but close doesn't necessarily mean you win. So I don't want to discourage you from writing a letter or making a statement, but I guess I'm just saying realistically, I don't know if that would make a difference, to be quite honest.
You may want to think about that strategically. I think it's worse to have something voted down than to just be left on the wall and picked up again next, next year.
Right, which is why we didn't, we never brought it to a floor vote, because we thought we would lose. And once you lose the floor vote, it makes it harder to bring it up again later.
Andy, did you want to jump into that?
I was going to say the same thing that Mary just.
Great, Dan?
Well, I just say, I think this is, this is where building a better relationship with, with you as a legislative delegation, because certainly if there's anything we can do to move the needle with members, you know, to have conversations with them, I know on this particular bill, I actually gave testimony, in part because an early issue about constitutionality. And Peter Teachout and I were able to testify about, you know, the constitutional qualifications and why this didn't offend the Vermont Constitution. You know, so if there is, you know, especially something like this where there is something, we would certainly welcome the opportunity to make the case for these type of things, even if it's, you know, obviously as a city, we can't expend money on it, but we're certainly here and available to have conversations with people, and it's, I think it's a great thing that we could do, given the strong relationship that, you know, we have with all of you, to be able to have some of those conversations with other, other members who may not be fully on board.
Yeah, we heard good testimony, and also there were some citizens of Montpelier who came in and talked to us and made a strong case. We also talked to, I forget, a community in Maryland, I forget which one it was, but who had done it for a while, and they voiced no problems with it. So we had what we needed, in a sense. What we didn't have was the commitment from enough senators. We had enough information, I think, and I think you guys did a good job of coming in and making the case, but there were just some people who just really got stuck, they weren't, they weren't going to move.
So you all asked a couple of other questions that maybe I can just tick off. On the highway funding, we put in 100% funding for local, for highway budgets in the quarter one bill, knowing that the, that that money needed to get out the door. So rather than doing it in, you know, a quarter and a quarter and a quarter, we pushed it all out for you. On the body camera question, and Anthony, maybe you know this better, but I'm pretty sure that the, that the only issue with body cameras was for the state police, and we did not make them, everybody's nodding on that. So that's not an issue. We didn't press that, push that burden back down on you. There was some money that we put, also put in the quarter one budget for community justice centers, and I'm expecting, because Montpelier CJC runs transitional housing, helps with transitional housing, I think you'll see, the way it was set up, you should see an extra about $22,000 for that, as well as $250,000 divided 14 ways, just to help with some, 14 ways, 18 ways being the number of CJC's in the state. So 18 divided into 250 for kind of what we called COVID-related issues. So we tried, I tried to figure out how to push some money down in that way. And we also did, and I think this was in the supplemental budget adjustment, 600,000 for community-based programs like diversion and CJC's. The Department of Corrections may use a little of that money for some, to supplement some work they're doing. They're still sorting that out, but we generally tried to figure out a way to move some money down into the community. The one thing that I need to check on is, and we had funding for the police social worker that we were going to share between Berry and Montpelier. That was set up in the original budget that we were ready to vote on on March 13th. It was part of a federal grant, and it should still be there, but I need to confirm that with the Department of Mental Health. So no promises on that. A question I had for you all is, given, I mean Connor, and I, believe me, I understand this budget-cutting pain, the notion behind the police social worker was that Berry and Montpelier would add a bit of money to that. If the money is still there from the state, is the money still there from you all?
Yes.
It is, great. Okay, so I'll, I'll track that down, and fingers crossed that it's still there. I really am looking forward to kind of figuring out how to continue to enhance those sort of services. I'm anticipating an interest, a growing interest in alternative sort of services instead of traditional police, and I, I hope you all can give me, give us some guidance on what you would like to see there. To be a push to put more social workers in the state police barracks, and that's good, but I don't know if that's the best way to try to put those services in place. So any advice and insight you have on that will be welcomed, because I do expect that will, there'll be somewhat of a push to consider that when we do the rest of the budget in August and September.
So Bill, yeah, go ahead.
On that topic, and Mary, you and I had this conversation, I think, earlier this year, but for everyone's benefit. And I think this actually relates a lot, at least to the local conversations about policing, you know, I, some of the national stuff's just pretty abhorrent, but, you know, a lot of our police departments here in the state have become the de facto social service agencies, and this isn't happened overnight. This has been since the 80s, the gradual cutback from state and federal funding of social services. So we're dealing with substance abuses on the street, we're dealing with homelessness, we're dealing with family issues, we're dealing with kids in crisis. So, you know, whatever can be done to, to increase and help, you know, those are, those traditionally were state-provided services, and the locals, you know, we just kind of got what was left over, and more and more and more that's being pushed on us because there just aren't the resources to deal with them. So whatever you all can do to actually support the state human services efforts is going to help local governments here in Montpelier certainly, but all across the state, and take some of this pressure off policing, because there, there certainly are plenty of times when they're dealing with things that another agency could, could handle a lot more directly than, than they can, but at 3:00 in the morning, they're the only ones out there. And so that's who's getting the call if someone's flipping out, or someone's abusing someone, or someone's intoxicated, or whatever, that's who's handling it. And then they're trying to get them to, into the social service network. And yes, can our social, social worker help? Absolutely, but, you know, we're still, it's a pebble in an ocean.
Ann, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, Mary, did you have anything to follow up on that?
No, let, let Ann go, but I, one thing that we should talk about is housing money, which is related to trying, you know, the pebble in the ocean, but let's let Ann go.
I was just, I was just going to say, doesn't sound like things have changed in the last 20-plus years. I used to say you needed an MSW to be a member of the Montpelier Police Department, and that was when we, the state, had closed the state hospital, and we knew where an awful lot of the former residents had gone, and the Montpelier Police Department was left to deal with it. And to the best of my knowledge, when I was there, I was always very proud of how they did. We still called the Montpelier Polite Department. I know we were called that at one point, and I think we do, you know, it is easy to kind of kick the problem down the road. No one wants to raise money. It's a painful thing to do. What you're not picking up, the schools are picking up, and we have a crisis in both areas, and the question gets to be, how do we fund it? And, you know, and what do we cut, or what do we raise? And it's, it's a hard issue. And right now, while we're talking, the state is looking at, Mary, correct me, I think the general fund, is it something like a $200 million deficit? The property, the education fund, we were at 150 million. Looks like people ran out and bought big appliances with, online with their bonuses, so we're down to just 100 million, but that's somewhere between a 10 and a 12 cent property tax increase to cover. We know we can't do that. We know people can't handle that, but when we go back, we're going to have to cover the deficits in both, in both funds. And right now, you know, it's been like Christmas, we've had federal money to hand out, but it's almost all handed out, and it's, it's going to be a rough few months in, starting in August, because we have essentially kicked that painful can down the road. So if I can continue, one of the questions was, what can we use from you? And I think- And I think I've been fielding questions for the last couple of days from sole proprietors who are not happy with the lack of funding that they're getting. You know, we're trying to figure out how do you give money to tenants? Or do you give money to landlords? And how, how is it working out? And you're the ones that are really in touch with downtown. And what's happening in downtown? Who's coming, who's going? What it would take to make them stay? And let us know. So then we have some actual data to be making decisions on. I think that would be very helpful, other than we're saying, well, it must be like this. So getting some really concise information from you would be very helpful.
So before we keep going, I'm just keeping track of comments that you are, or questions that you all have brought to us. So, so Mary, just thinking about your question about social worker embedded in a police department and potentially in, with state police. I guess I would just say on that point, I mean, we're still learning. We think this is going to be a value add to the community. And I think that it makes sense for us anyway. I think probably checking about that in another year after we've had some experience with that. But, and you're probably aware of this, but just in case, you know, anyone out there is not. We also did hire a street outreach person to work specifically with our homeless population. And so that, that's also new this, this fiscal year. And I, I think is, have some, again, some real value. And it'll be interesting to see what kind of impacts both of those positions make. So something to follow up about in the future. And then coming back to your, your question, Anne, about having specific data about how is, who, who still is in trouble and whose, whose needs are not being met? You know, it makes me want to connect you with our, the Montpelier Lives Recovery Coordinator, Jean, is it Kissner, something like that? Who would be able to, I think, provide some specific data.
Met with the downtown development people.
Sure.
Maybe two weeks ago. Yeah.
Not quite the same.
Yeah. Sorry, go ahead, Dylan. Yeah, so it's a different entity and there, I think they, well, they may be tracking similar things, but it'd be good to get both perspectives, I think. They, the recovery coordinators, that role is really intended to help connect businesses with other resources that are out there. And so presumably any business that is still struggling to, you know, make, make it all work is hopefully going to be in touch with that, that person. So Jay, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'll just throw in there. And just so you know, Montpelier Live actually put out a survey this morning for all their member businesses, downtown and otherwise, looking for specific data. You know, what grants have you gotten? What loans have you gotten? How many employees do you have? Are you breaking even? When do you expect to break even? So like, it's a very data-driven survey. So it just went out, I don't know, probably nine o'clock this morning. So I think that, so I can connect you with Dan Groberg. I think they're, they're putting together a lot of those specific, that, those data points to help, you know, guide some of these bigger decisions.
That would be very helpful to get a copy of once it's done.
Yeah, well, I'll be sure to connect you. Thank you.
Super. Other thoughts from, from folks? So Senator Plino and then Lauren.
Just to jump around a little bit, I want to go back to the police thing just for a minute because there's another angle that we've been looking at it from as well. Where we've added members to the law enforcement training council group to try to create more diversity and change some of the operations of the law enforcement training council so that our officers who come out of the council, come out of the training program are better equipped to deal with some of the social issues. We're talking about adding members who represent the Human Rights Commission organization. Such as that, the racial equity director to, to the law enforcement training council board. But also to encourage them to come up with a program that would require prospective police officers to actually do internships and work with the mental health agency or some other street agency before they become police officers. So that they get, that there's that, you know, that way of experiencing what's going on in the streets as well. So I think that's just something to keep in mind. With, there also, I think we put in there, this was in a miscellaneous law enforcement bill, I think we put in there as well, requiring a group to come up with a way to cooperatively buy body cams so that they can reduce the cost for communities who are going to use them. So that's, that's another thing. The other thing I want to mention, and I'm not sure where this is going to come from, where are you going to go to get this? But we did allocate $13 million for municipalities to try to recoup some of the money. That was a loss due to COVID-19. So I'm not sure exactly what that will cover. But there's $13 million there that is going to go to local communities, municipalities. I'm not sure yet where it's, you know, what agency is going to come from and what the guidelines are going to be. But that's something to keep, keep in mind as well. $13 million, say we, we, we had allocated it, then it got cut back in the house. We were able to put the money back in again in the Senate. So that's something to keep an eye on.
And that specifically could potentially be used for lost revenue? I mean, that's something that, no, okay, that's, that's, that's kind of what I had. Okay. Just thought I'd clarify that. Go ahead.
They're not making it easy.
Yeah.
That's the feds.
Nice try, Mayor. What you should always be trying to do. If you can make an argument that you are, that it's covering business disruption, sometimes you can back into it. And, and that's also part of the reason the, the money for the local governments was structured the way it was, is because it was being organized in a way that you could, you could take advantage of it, that the feds wouldn't make you pay it back. That's our big, big fear, is being forced to pay this money back.
So they're giving you money, but they're making it hard to spend the money. It's very frustrating.
So Mary, if it's not for deficit, what's it for? Do you have some, I guess I didn't hear clearly what you said you could spend it on.
Business disruption. And, and so I, I, I've not heard that phrase used around local government, but certainly all of the economic recovery monies have been used, have been framed as business disruption. The reason that we, the, the money that we are trying, that we have allocated for the community justice centers and the, those other local efforts, we have framed as needing to do cleaning or to buy tablets or, you know, trying to make it fit into that framework of how you're having to reimagine how you're providing services. So the CJCs have to, you know, reorganize how they're working with clients. And so that's how we justify that. So going forward, if you can think about how to, you know, the services that you need to be providing, if they're different services, then maybe there's an argument that therefore they could be covered by CRF sorts of money. There's 140 million that we left on the table in anticipation of, of different guidelines or needing, or, or different needs. The best part of the world would be if the feds would send us another pot of money. If they do, it will happen really rapidly. So if you, I mean, and, and none of us know what the guidelines are going to be or the limitations. So we're, we all need to be really ready to kind of think creatively and smartly.
An example of something that would not be approved, I talked with Barry City Council. And they were looking at the money they've lost because they could not rent out the BOR building and, you know, others, other lost revenue that they were trying to recoup. And they were pretty much told that that would not be appropriate.
That's a helpful analogy, thank you, or comparison. Lauren, I know you've been waiting here a little bit, and then Andy.
Yeah, I was just hoping to hear a little bit more about, you've touched on homelessness a couple of times, but I know that some really kind of creative and impressive work happened to house people. And we just love an update on kind of where things stand and what you see coming up. And, you know, the city has allocated money for homelessness services or the street outreach worker that we, that Anne mentioned and some other kind of flexible dollars. So just getting a sense of what, what the city's role might be and what the state is doing right now would be really helpful.
So I, I can jump in on that maybe.
Yeah.
So we, the total housing package was about 83, was $83 million. 23 million went to the Vermont Housing Conservation Board to, and that was their estimate of what they would be able to push out the door and have expended by December 30th, which is the deadline. They had $56 million of applications in there. I, I, I can't imagine how hard they're having to work to push that out. There is, I, I'm not remembering the dollar amount, but a good deal of money to help with rental assistance and, you know, kind of doing first and last for people or covering some rental loss.
That was another, sorry to interrupt, that's $25 million.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it was really impressive, yeah. So thanks for that, Anthony. Helping with utility arrearsages. So Anthony mentioned what we put in, and they increased it. But on the utility arrearsages, we put in, I think, 20 million and the Senate reduced it to about 13. And that's just the give and take between the two bodies. But we were trying to pay attention there. And then we also did, and I think it was 13 million for rehabbing homeless shelters. It's not, that's a wrong number. It's not 13, 13 was something else. Maybe it was eight or nine million to help out specifically with rehabbing some homeless shelters and, you know, enabling them to take clients again. And then finally, a package that was put together that will enable the state to wrap some services around people needing how, needing more of the ongoing housing services. And that will last for beyond this, you know, December 30th. And I'm particularly excited about that because that's what it's going to take to make that sort of fundamental shift in housing and, and, and providing homes for all Vermonters. I haven't asked, had an update recently from the Department of Children and Families, which is kind of the locus of, of this work. But I know that they were preparing to become, go back to their more prescriptive guidelines and expectations in terms of people's behavior in, in housing that they were providing. And, you know, during the height of the pandemic, there, it was a pretty open-ended set of, of rules that, there weren't any rules really. They were just trying to keep people housed, which I'm thrilled that they did. I think we're all thrilled. But, but they are beginning to come back to and have expectations of meeting certain standards if, if people are receiving services. So you may begin to see and maybe have already begun to see some disruption there or, you know, changing in the way services are being provided and, and the way housing is being provided. And I think that huge kudos to DCF for how hard they have worked to make this work. 2,000 people were housed during the height of the pandemic. And if everything falls in place, at least 1,000 people should be seeing how opportunities to have homes as a result of this money that, that has come down the pike. May, maybe even more, but just adding up what people were saying that they were creating, it's, it's, it's close to 1,000.
And there was no COVID-positive homeless people during the whole time, which I think Vermont was the only state or one of the few states because of the quick action of DCF to, to get them all into hotels and things like that.
Andy, anything, you had had your hand raised earlier and?
I don't have anything else on the homeless, if, if Anthony or Anne want to talk about that. Well, I just wanted to say, it is great that we are talking about it. It would be good to do it at the beginning of the session, obviously. I hadn't seen the legislative agenda, they did send it out for this meeting. So that was interesting to read. Of course, it would be maybe more helpful to read earlier and then have discussions, how, how it goes along. So I hope we can, if we're all still, you know, senators next year and representatives, we can, we can do this again in January and follow it along. But I wanted to answer a couple of things that have happened so far. On, on what it's, Donna's question about what it can be used for. I mean, my understanding is like anything that you can really tie to a COVID expense, not lost revenue, but you can say that this was an expense you wouldn't have had if it wasn't for COVID, starting back in, in March, then you can count that. So you can be creative, kind of like Representative Hooper was saying about what you call for and what you put it in there. But there's an opportunity that it pays. So even like you're, the mental health worker in the police, maybe that's needed because of COVID. You know, there's, there might be ways of trying to make an argument for expenses. It can't be that because it can't be anything that was budgeted prior. But anything that's coming out new, you can, you can, you can use that money for it. But I think it's going to be like the business grants. There's going to be more need from all the towns across the state than there is money to meet all those needs, unfortunately. But we do have that money that Representative Hooper talked about that was left on the table. So we do have some time left to talk about new things and how we could maybe get more money for municipalities or direct it in a certain way that's going to help municipalities and specifically those in Washington County. But one thing I did notice on your legislative agenda, number one, which I don't know if this is prioritized by the list, but was support for microtransit. And we did get support for microtransit. So we've met your number one priority, I want to put on the record. So we got $400,000 for microtransit and, and some, you know, Vtrans is committed to that and that money's going to help, hopefully, kind of do some promoting and other work. So I think we're looking pretty good at making sure that that Montpelier pilot project will happen. On the railroad, I, I would call it, I don't know if you're talking about the siding or you're talking about the new runaround, they call it. I think you're talking about the new runaround. And so, but I think there's going to be issues with the siding in the future that it would be good for the city and myself to talk more about, about how we can work with Vtrans to avoid problems with siding. And if there's uses for the siding that we don't want to see happen or that we do want to see happen. And I don't know exactly what the issues are with the costs of closing the road, the new crossing.
Well, so the issue is, you know, the runaround, I guess, we were thinking of that as the siding and the current, you know, is the main rail. And, and we've known that they were talking about this. And, and you know, you remember, we had a meeting with the state and it was, well, we're designing, we're going to come back in and seek money. And, and you know, we'll see what happens. We don't have a specific schedule. And then it, you know, we, we understood that the, the states, from what I understood, the state gave the bridges to, had some money to repair the bridges and they gave the bridges to the railroad. So now the state doesn't have to worry about them. And they're using that money to do, build the siding, this runaround. So they just started building it and, you know, I think it was a complete shock to all of us. And as part of the, the deal is anything that's going underneath it, water sewer lines, at least have to be dug up and sleeved and all these things. And here we are in the middle of the pandemic, cutting things. And they're like, oh yeah, and you have to do this. You've got, you've got to incur these costs to, so we can build a rail line that, you know, we didn't know certainly was coming this year and aren't, aren't totally convinced of the need. that, you know, we didn't know certainly was coming this year and aren't totally convinced of the need of, but that's not really our, our place. So it's, you know, this has happened and we've now worked out a deal with them and the street closure for it is on, on the thing. So, you know, but it's, to me, it's kind of, and when we met with them and had a talk with them in Vtrans, it just felt like, you know, Vtrans is really sort of actively advocating for the railroad and not the public interest. And, and so the question is, how do these things happen without oversight? And what role is there, if any? I mean, I realize the rail has a lot of flexibility and they provide a lot of great services, you know, we're not anti-rail. But it certainly impacts, you know, savings pasture development, all those kinds of things, so.
My, my suspicion is that they, because of that meeting, because we were starting asking questions about it, that given the opportunity, they just started building it so, to, to avoid that frankly. And we'd have some conversations with the mayor of Rutland about the underground utilities under railroad crossings. They've had some battles.
Yeah, I mean, it just seems like if that's their project and this has to be done, it ought to be part of the cost of the project, not, you know, not dumped off to somebody else who's unexpected. And I mean, that seems at the minimum, but also it is troubling because it, one way or another, is public money. Whether, you know, I mean, I, there's, whatever money Vtrans has already paid them, they're now using to build this thing. So now it's their money, so I get that, but.
Yeah, and I had heard that about the bridges, so, well, maybe Bill, you and I can talk.
Yeah, I don't want to get.
I give more detail and I can reach out to my contacts.
There, there are others here that can explain it in more detail than I.
Okay, well, let me know who I should talk to and all.
I think I had seen a hint from Dan.
Yeah, I just had a, a quick question on, not on the railroad, but on the issue before. You know, when we talk about the, the funding or monies that are available, you know, how open is legislature going to be when you reconvene to, if a municipality has a special project that clearly fits in to the COVID related, if we want to bring, you know, sort of an individual project as opposed to the, the block funding that has been given so far? You know, so just as a stalking horse for this conversation, you know, we've faced as an issue, a reduction in public restrooms downtown Montpelier. The city hall has been closed, businesses have been closed. And so, you know, we're reevaluating, I think as a city, you know, what are our public facilities? And which we wouldn't have had to prior to the COVID outbreak, but of course in the post world. So if we came to the legislature and said, hey, we need, this is a funding project for something that other, but for COVID, we wouldn't have needed. How receptive do you expect the, the, your committees to be in, when you come back in August and September to those type of requests?
So as you guys know, the appropriations bills begin in the House. Our modus operandi is to ask our policy committees, for the appropriations committee asks the policy committees, what's your advice on what we should be doing? So if you are interested in a particular issue, you, you need to be having conversations with that policy committee. And, you know, so that's, that, that's a great project that ought to fit within, yeah, I, I'm, I think that's cool. And you're probably the only, we are probably the only town that's going to suggest it. So it's a little hard to see how, how that could work. I, I honestly was disappointed that we did not do more for towns in kind of a general block grant way. And I, and so Bill can put his League of Cities and Towns hat on and think about what the opportunities are there to maybe position yourselves better. Generally, we tried not to do the very specific allocations because it becomes a feeding frenzy at that point. And we wanted to broadly say housing, healthcare, you know, broadband, these broad areas, and then trust the folks within the executive branch to put it out there. But let's talk about those sort of opportunities and figure out how to fit them in.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I just want to talk toward that end about funding because, and I, I don't pretend to speak for every town and city, but certainly the folks that I'm in contact with, I think this is pretty consistent, is that most of the municipalities did not see a huge amount of direct expenses from COVID. I think most of us were expecting to, we were expecting that our police and fire folks were all going to get sick and, and, you know, be out in waves and we were going to have tons of overtime, filling shifts and trying to deal with medical things. And, and that just didn't happen, we didn't actually have anybody out. So, you know, we had a handful, you know, we've kept track of our expenses, but they're in the tens of thousands, they're not massive. You know, we put up the plastic things in the offices and those kinds of things. And, and, and we are tracking them, but I, I understand that the lost revenue is a hard sell and I realize a lot of that's federal thing, but what that really means is that's roads that aren't going to get, you know, fixed. And, and I mean deferred maintenance, deferred things, programs aren't getting done because that's, which is the same as what you're doing at the state. But it's, it's, so there are expense, there are costs, but they're not out of pocket. We just didn't have to buy that much. And I think that is across the board, you know, we didn't have a lot of payroll, you know, absurdities. In fact, if anything, we reduced our payroll because we furloughed everybody. So I, I don't know what you can do about it, but then I think that is a common theme with local governments, you know, to be universal.
I, I was hoping that we'd see more for the downtown organizations, you know, so kind of the, the ancillary work. You're, you're right, I, I, I totally understand the core services for municipalities. But I, you know, I, I'm always going to be a fan and promoter of downtown and those sorts of issues. And I just didn't hear a strong voice for them being core to the recovery that our, our communities.
Interesting. Any further thoughts or anybody?
I, one other question I had, just for somebody I can talk to later, also on your list was about dispatch. And as a former volunteer firefighter, somewhat interested in dispatch. So if people, I, I know it's a constant issue about the, the regional dispatch thing, but, but there might be an opportunity because of COVID and, and costs to, to finally do something about it. So if there is somebody in particular on the council or in the city that wants to talk to me about what the city wants to see as far as dispatch, then let me know.
No, I feel like, sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, to me, we're all in this together. None of us have enough money to cover the costs and, and do what our businesses need and catch up. And it's going to take some creative work and some creative thinking. And I think the more we talk, if we could set up a way, you know, so that, I know, I used to be up at the State House at eight o'clock and anyone that knows me knows I hate eight o'clock meetings. But we were there for coffee every Tuesday morning to talk to people when we were trying to get payment in lieu of taxes, which was probably as difficult as trying to get your non-resident or non-citizen voting. But some, some way so that there is regular, because I am pulling a blank on railroad sightings and it's not in any of my committees. I have no idea that there's an issue there for the city. So it would be helpful just because, you know, well, if we ever get back to normal, we have lunch and we talk in the halls and, you know, to be able to put in a good word or to, to, to do some work there, person to person would be helpful, but need to know what's going on. And I think the more we talk, the more we talk with the businesses. We all want to do everything, but we're all looking at very limited resources right now and a very unknown future. We haven't even talked about the schools.
We also haven't talked about how long it might be before state employees really come back to Montpelier. Oh. As opposed to working at home remotely from now on. So, I mean, I really worry about restaurants more than any, I mean, worry about businesses, but restaurants, I don't see how they're gonna, I just don't see how they're going to do it. I mean, I, if we could find some ways to support them particularly, because they're so much part of the culture as well as the economy. It's just really horrible to think about the amount of debt they, they're racking up and how hard it's going to be for them to come back online. You know, before, before we, I want to go back, Connor's been very quiet since we had that initial conversation about the non-resident vote, non-citizen voting.
Citizen stuff, Anthony?
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to bum him out or anything, but when you said something, if you feel like writing a letter, Connor, I was gonna say is write it to the president pro tem, not to the committee. Because to move a bill out to the floor of the Senate is, has to go through the Rules Committee these days. And so the Rules Committee has to say, yes, it's okay for GovOps to vote this, this bill out of the committee, bring it to the floor. So, and it's really the president pro tem that is, you'd have to address if you were gonna, don't pick on Jeanette White. Jeanette will, Jeanette will support it, but the president pro tem is where the sticking point is.
And I, I really appreciate the strategy on all this and I, I understand losing a vote could actually be detrimental. But I look at the possibility of going back to the advocates, advocates who went door to door on this and started from the very beginning after going through all these committee hearings. And I think, you know, if two people vote against it, I'd like to know who they are so we can talk to them for next time around. If that's, if that's the way we go.
Sure, I hear you.
Just getting back to Senator Pritchard's question about dispatch. Donna, can I nominate you here just as a person who'd be a good connection to talk about dispatch?
Yeah, he's on, he's on my list to be in touch with.
Okay, great, super. Okay. Well, anything else here, team? Okay, well, thank you again all for taking the time. Oh, sorry, Bill, did you want to say something?
No, I, I, I just wanted, I don't want to beat a dead horse or get too into the weeds and I really appreciated Senator, Senator Paulina mentioning that there was a thought of sort of groups going in together to purchase body cams, you know, to, to get some savings. I, I will tell you, and you've probably heard this, but there are two really big costs or hurdles. And it's not really purchasing the cameras, it's the digital storage of all the data.
Right.
After, after you buy them is really expensive. And now, and, and of course everyone, you know, we're all in favor of, of public transparency and access to public records. But if you're familiar with the case in Burlington where, you know, somebody asked for a full eight hour shift of video from a police officer, which then required a supervisor to watch the full eight hours to figure out if they were active investigations, if they were juveniles, you know, things that needed to be redacted. And Burlington sought to bill for that time and the Supreme Court said that's not billable under the way the public records law is currently written. And so frankly, that put a stop to body cameras in Vermont from local police departments because of, of that cost in the sense that, you know, people could just want to, I want every officer's shift because I want to put it on YouTube and, and the cost of processing that and looking at that. So I, I, you know, whether that can be addressed in the public records law or somehow, but those are, those are the funding costs that we're most afraid of. I think the cost of purchasing the cameras is fine and the philosophy behind them and the policies, we're in a hundred percent agreement. So those are not insignificant hurdles for local departments. And if the state is going to mandate body cameras for all police departments, those are going to be huge issues and costs for local governments, which we may not be prepared for across the board.
Yeah, no, you're right, we are, that has come up, we are thinking about that. We don't have the answer yet, but the cost of the visualization and the, how long it has to be stored and all that kind of stuff is on the list of things that we're trying to figure out. Appreciate it.
Just to be clear, S two nineteen doesn't mandate the city.
At one point that was being talked about.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It only, it's only state police that'll have them now.
Well, in anticipating that it may just be a matter of time before it is. Or, or even, yeah, that, just that there are, these are the things that, I'm sure you're all, you all are already considering some of these things for the, for the state police as you, you know, wade, wade through that. But certainly those are the things that we, we're thinking about, yeah.
It's a good practice, we'd like to do it.
Yeah. Jack, you are muted.
Even though his thing doesn't so muted.
Yeah. No.
Turn on your microphone.
Have you? And while, while Jack's trying to unmute himself, I was concerned about the cost of storage and heard when we required the state police to do the cameras, that it's come way down. And so if you haven't investigated lately, something has changed. Still hear you on all of the, on the other issue, but the storage issue, something's changed and could be worth looking into.
That's really good to know, thank you.
My understanding was that it, it's really the review time and that's in the Supreme Court case that Burlington fought against that, that sort of free access. It was not so much the storage as the review because you, you are talking about lengthy amounts of time and involvement and because you're dealing with law enforcement exemptions as well as any other exemptions at play. That becomes, that becomes a cost and it's, it's baked into the law. You know, and I think this is one of those things that, you know, public records law is a tricky balance and you start to, start to change some of those things. I know the AG's office has talked about some of those changes and it, it has ramifications well beyond that, that simple issue of, you know, can we, can we charge for this particular video redaction? Because it's, it deals with the inspection of public records. But those are, those are obviously concerns that we have as a local municipality as to who pays for this. If there's a mandate that does come down, that would be a huge, huge amount of resources on our part. And, 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 and maybe this is a pitch for, you know, greater funding for public records. You know, having a public records officer from municipalities to, to use so that somebody could be funded to, to do that, not just for the city of Montpelier, but for any, any municipality. You know, some states have that where they fund those type of public records officers so that, you know, people can have free and easy access to these records and inspections. And the state just builds into its process that cost of reviewing it.
Donna, go ahead, oh, and then Connor.
I mean, I don't know how you have the state requirement, you said you are requiring the state police, but yet have you dealt with these issues with the state police as far as their cost and their time for public records? And for me, one of the other issues is once you give it to somebody as a public record, do you really want all that on YouTube? So I, I feel like there's a privacy issue on both sides that we have just not dealt with. I think that really has to be dealt with before we start putting more body cameras on people.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a great question. Go ahead, Connor.
Jack was just asking if Cameron could unmute the phone number seven three four three eight five one, that might be the culprit.
Okay, thank you.
There it goes.
With regard to the storage, what I've been thinking, I would like to see all municipal police have to have body cams. I was thinking that a good bargain might be to require the police to purchase the cameras and have all the data storage. Require the police to purchase the cameras and have all the data storage be at the state level. The way to add the costs. Just an idea to think about.
Yep.
Yeah. Any further comments or questions to your team? All right, thank you all again for taking the time or meeting with us, and I, I think. I mean, so this is the first time since, oh gosh, well, since I've been mayor anyway. That we've done, had a legislative agenda. Uh, and so I anticipate that we'll, we'll probably put together our agenda again prior to. Uh, the next session and hopefully meet with you sooner. Andy, I think you mentioned January. Is that sort of the right time or is sooner better? Uh, to meet with you all and to chat about our, our, what we are on our agenda.
Well, it's good to do it before we reconvene. So January is okay, but January, it'd be better to do it like early December.
Right.
That way people can think on it, or if you want to introduce a bill, you know, that kind of there's deadlines, so. January is not too late, but it's, it's ideally it would be before that.
The Senate deadline hits in November on a lot of years, so, but. It, it really, you know, other than giving us an agenda, just talking with us and helping us to understand the issues. Like, oh yeah, you've got to pay someone, and I'm thinking, sitting here thinking, well. If I call the police, because there's somebody in my backyard that shouldn't be there. I don't know if I want myself in my nightgown at two o'clock in the morning on YouTube. I mean, there are some privacy issues there. You know, do I get to have a say if I get to be on YouTube or not? You can't put my picture, you know, you can't take your picture for the newspaper under, for certain circumstances without a sign off. So, uh, it's, it's an interesting one, and we haven't caught up with technology. Yeah.
Am I being heard?
Oh, um, Alice.
Hi. It sounded as if you were about to secure the meeting. I, I came in because I did want to, uh, comment on something that was posted. Uh, related to John Carr.
And we have not yet taken up that.
Oh, thank you so much. This happened and you go away and I not have an opportunity. So I'm gonna mute myself again. Let me.
Okay, super. Okay, um, great, well, thank you all, and I, I hear you about having just. Uh, more informal conversations, particularly as the next session approaches, so. Um, thanks again for your time and.
Thanks for all your hard work, the local level stuff.
Thanks for all the time you put in at the legislature. It's really, you know, this, this year in particular.
Not an easy time to be policymaker these days.
Yeah.
But Vermont is one of the few that has figured out how to do it, and I believe we were the first.
Yep.
So, uh, yeah, and we were just voted the number one state to live in. We knew all. Poll and CBS or CNBC, so we're doing it right.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks a lot.
Um, all right, so we're gonna take up the next item, which is Vermont Rail Systems Berry Street closure. Um, and to that, I, I think I'm gonna turn it over to Bill probably to explain this. And we were sort of just talking about it a little bit, but.
A little bit, um, although the good news is I think it is figured out, but Tom McArdle is on, and he's really leading this effort. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna pop it to Tom. There he is, and he can explain what, what we need. So, so, you know, I think the general issue that I was concerned about is that these things can happen. And suddenly we have to respond finances. The good news is we've worked out a plan that does the hardest. Take it away, Tom.
Hello, everybody. Hopping in.
Welcome back.
Our time project manager, Tom McArdle, for those that you don't know.
My abbreviation after my name is JT now, just Tom. So, and was just project manager, helping out, um, and Kurt, I believe Kurt Monica is on still. City engineer, deputy director. So Kurt handles our utilities for us. Um, engineering side of things, the technical side of things. And, um, I'm helping on more of the administrative piece. And with this, um, agenda item, the traditional, usually a traditional request for a street closure approval. Under the, uh, under the ordinance and. Thought this would be, uh, this is a public hearing if people want to, want to speak to this issue. And, and the request is on behalf of Vermont Rail Systems. Um, but it's not purely for their project. Uh, we are compelled under the, um, the master license agreement. That the city has in place with the state and signed on by the railroad. And a master license agreement is, allows all the, our utilities to pass through a rail right of way. Um, and includes water sewer, um, I'm sure if we have a district heat line. And storm systems, so with all of those utilities, we pay an annual fee. Um, for the right to pass through those, uh, through those rights of way. Um, the passing through the right of way requires that we comply with REMA standards. Um, that abbreviation is America Railway, American Railway Engineering Maintenance of Way Association. Um, and those standards are quite rigid, um, because the rail traffic and the heavy live loads that pass over them. So, the city is compelled to upgrade our utilities. And that was the unforeseen costs that, that Bill spoke about. And is in the, um, agenda as the expenditure required portion. So the. Couple of things on updates on this, the, the request for closure has been amended. I'm not sure if you were, saw that, but we received an update, um, related to the delivery of materials. Uh, that is delayed, so the. Closure is now expected to be, um, on July twentieth. And then would continue for seven consecutive days after that. One of the other updates is, um, thanks to Kurt's good work. We were looking at, um, a project, um, one that was, uh, we were actually being told. We had two options to use for the, um, improving, up, upgrading our utilities. Um, typically, we would put our utility work out to bid, uh, receive competitive pricing. Kurt was able to, um, scurry around and get another price, um, so we, we have a significantly less cost. Uh, hopefully, hoping that will be, uh, less than a hundred thousand. But nonetheless, it's a project that we weren't anticipating. Uh, these are water sewer utility funds, the enterprise funds. You know, we have a fifty year plan, bring our water and sewer systems up to snuff, um, current standards. Uh, the water supply rules, um, our aging infrastructures, so this is not really where we wanted to spend our money. Um, I suspect most of you would agree with that. So you understand where we are with, with particularly our water systems, but also our sewers and our, and our combined sewer overflow efforts. Um, so this will take a hit, um, to those, uh, to those funds. And that's probably the, the biggest issue besides the lack of real staff time available. To support this project, they're going full steam, have been since, um, they showed up in, I think, March. And, uh, so we're trying to catch up and keep up with them. And so I won't go on any further than to say that, um, that project will. Will go, um, first do the utility work using our contractor. And then, uh, they'll complete it with, uh, putting the new tracks in. Um, and then complete the connection, um, right in front of Caledonia Spirits. And that will become the active rail for moving these heavy, heavy cars. Um, their, their contracts, um, we've told is to move grout, the granite waste from. Um, Raniville and elsewhere where they have it stored. Um, the bridges are, um, not structurally sound to support those heavy loads. And so that's, um, the idea, I guess they'll use that, they'll call that Washington County Rail as the siding. What becomes of that rail, um, they're not clear. What, uh, what will be done? Will they walk away from it and abandon it? We don't know that yet. So this, this track along in front of Saban's pasture and. And on the north side of the Wunuski River avoids both rail, um, river crossings, so that's the, the benefit of it. I believe this track was last in use in the fifties. Uh, there was a lot of litigation over it. Uh, whether it was abandoned, I think it was finally settled by the courts with the Pioneer Street Bridge Project, um, and that's another story. But, um, so we certainly weren't anticipating, uh, this and, um, but we're gonna keep up and get the work done. And, um, seek, uh, your approval. Take any questions if you have any.
Um, well, so I'm gonna officially open the public hearing before I forget to do that. Uh, and, uh, I do have one other question that I see Dan, um, has a hand raised. Uh, but I'm curious if there is any, um, representative here for Vermont Rail Systems. Um, if they wouldn't mind just giving a quick shout out to say, hey. I'm not seeing anybody.
But I don't think they're gonna be attending.
Speak for Kurt here because he's, uh, texted me and said that he has wireless internet service and it's, it's spotty. So, uh, he will cut out, and as you can tell, his voice wasn't real clear there. But I think what he said is that they were invited there, were aware of this meeting, but, um, chose not to attend or not able to attend.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Dan, go ahead.
So a couple of questions, Tom. Um, one is, is this something where we have to follow their timeline? There's no ability for us to push back or extend times if we want to. Um, maybe delay in, you know, some of this work for budget purposes?
Uh, no, uh, we did ask that question and, um, they are moving forward. To paraphrase them, but, um, essentially don't need our approval to do what they're doing. Um, and that's why I included the legal, uh, clause in there, the references. The, the unfortunate part of that is if, uh, we wanted to delay and budget for this. Um, that we certainly have that option. Uh, we could defer bringing our utilities up to REMA standards. But it would be much more costly once the rail is active. Uh, we would have to jack and bore, and, and so there's, there's a lot more effort to this. We are actually, and I should have pointed this out, Kurt probably was gonna mention this. But we are actually only doing the sleeves and putting the lines in place. The, so I should back up, it probably will ultimately be that closer to the hundred and fifty. We're putting the sleeves in and the utilities, but we're not actually connecting them right now. Um, because of the rush, we, we really, that would be a bigger project. We've got to shut down the water main, test it, do all that other work with it. So, um, so to answer your question, yes, we could delay it, but it would be a lot more money.
Okay.
Do it while the road is closed, um, it would be, uh, it will go much quicker this way. So, we thought, if we're gonna feel the pain, we'd feel the least amount of pain.
Okay, and then, um, I think you partially answered my next question, which was, are, are we talking about, you know, just. And this Berry Street area, um, are we just, and are we just talking about electrical utilities and water and sewer? Um, or are there any other sort of structural issues that the city has to address, say like the culvert?
No, it's a good question. Um, and the culvert, um, the big culvert on Berry Street was, uh, replaced after Irene event. And the end of the culvert that passes on through the railroad right of way was designed to meet, um, rail standards. So that was, because it's in the right of way, that was a requirement. For our municipal utilities, we have, uh, two sewer lines, one is a gravity main and the other is a force main. And we also have a, uh, a water main. The water main's, uh, probably the oldest of the utilities. The electrical is aerial, um, there is, uh, buried telephone, but I don't think buried, the buried section of that passes through this. Um, this portion of the, of the railroad line. From a, from a bigger picture perspective, um, it's not that this work wasn't entirely not envisioned. We had, um, included this area in the TIF projects, um, as identified need to support future development. So, we had planned, as Bill pointed out, the, um, utility work would actually be funded through the TIF program. And when we come back, we're asking for five years before we actually have to occupy the, the new. Uh, steel sleeves that we're putting in to give us time to actually fund that. To support the development, whatever that might be, um, Saban's or elsewhere in that area in the TIF district.
And that's my, my last question is that, that these utilities are, are for the areas along either side of Berry Street to serve them.
Yeah, there's a pump station, um. Oh, just to describe it, if you know where the, the, the Berlin Veterinary Clinic is, right across the street. Um, it's a little station, it's, it's quite deep, but, um, we can't carry all the, the wastewater from that. That section of Berry Street, uh, by gravity, uh, so it actually has to flow back to that pump station and then is pumped back. That's why there is a gravity line under the railroad track and then a force main going the other direction. Those, those utilities will be, um, we will upgrade those, um, through this rail project. Um, again, with our crystal ball thinking what our, what our future need to be for, for development of that area.
Uh, Donna.
Uh, I just want to make sure I understood, Tom, that this money is coming from a utility fund. It's sort of being redirected to do this now instead of other things.
There is a utility reserve fund, um. Looks like we lost Kurt, so I hope I get this right, Kurt. But, um, the enterprise funds has a, um, reserve for this type of, of work, of utility work. And, and as I said, we had a fifty year plan. So we're extending some of those funds like Clarence Avenue and other utility work that we're doing. We have, uh, projects identified, um, every year for foreseeable future. So we'll have to tap into that with the existing rates that we already have set monthly. Or it's not the general fund, it is the, uh, those enterprise funds that will pay for this. Out of order.
Okay, so Bill, would we be authorizing tonight to spend this? So this is just an information of, oh, this is how they're gonna be spending it?
We have to do it, so whether, whether we authorize it or not, but I mean, essentially where, the real thing you're doing is closing the street. I mean, you're, you're, you're authorizing the street closure for this work, but because of all the other implications. We felt it's important to brief you on everything. And to answer your, your question, you know, more briefly, I mean, yes, this is money that we're spending on this now. We would have spent at some point, but we probably would have spent it on something else right now.
Yeah, thank you. Great, any further questions from council? Any comments from the public, since this is a public hearing? Uh, yes, I see a hand from Charlie. Go ahead. Uh, you're gonna want to unmute yourself, though.
Crap, I have a couple of questions, and I don't know if they're to Tom or to Bill. But my question is, uh, Tom keeps talking about the right of way. Was there a right of way, rail right of way from the, I'll call it the brewery. Over, across Berry Street onto the portion of the right of way, rail right of way that was there. During the Pioneer Street, um, bridge decision twenty years ago.
Yes, uh, the. Yes, uh, the, this portion of the, of the track was, um. There are three rails in, in the Mopiler areas, Mopiler, Chelsea, Mopiler Wells River. And I think the other was Mopiler Berry Railroad. Uh, there are actually three crossings at one time on Granite Street. See one, only one there today. Stone Cutters Way, if you go back, um, give you a little history through Stone Cutters Way, there are three active rails lines there. Um, Mopiler was able to, uh, consolidate that to a single rail line. But the right of ways still exist, uh, they don't go away. So the Mopiler and Wells River Railroad is the line that they are reactivating. And what the court found is that they did not abandon it. They, they kind of cannibalized the, the steel, the, the rail lines and moved it to another track. They discontinued use. We were, we were instructed to treat it as an active rail. Um, our bike path design was, was, um, built with, uh, with instructions from the Attorney General. That to treat it as an active rail. So the, the right of way still existed and that was finally settled after. A lot of challenges that the state or the rail abandoned it. Was finally settled with the Pioneer Bridge Project because you may recall that the Pioneer Bridge. Is a curved, has a curved approach. Um, prior to the construction, it was a kind of a right angle. And it relocated that rail right of way, put it up on the hill where, where that right of way is today.
So it begs the question, when the state bought the Washington County Railroad back in the early eighties? Did it buy the land and, and/or the property that that right of way is on? And if not, who owns it? If you know.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure I entirely know. I'm familiar with the eighties acquisition by the state. It was actually a court decision. Um, and we do have the decision in our, in our office, um, because I'm not there. Um, I want to check to see if it did include the Mopiler and Wells. Uh, they say it does. I haven't seen it though, in that court decision. I didn't think it did. Um, but I, so I don't know the answer to that, if it was, if it came in the court decision when. The state actually took ownership of the right of way. So the, the state actually leases the rail to Vermont Rail, um, and pays the, the rail to operate.
Yeah, I know that, but the question is who owns the land? That the council is currently being asked to close the street on. You say it's a right of way from the Wells River line, but who owns that line? And who owns the property and therefore who owns the right of way? And I would think, I would think, notwithstanding Tom, what you just said. That before the city council would have proceeded, it ought to do its homework. And pull out the title and find out who owns the land.
Um, I can go by what the Attorney General John Dunleavy tells us and that the state actually owns the land, so. Done by the Zorzi family, the Zorzi Asia family through years and years of litigation.
Um, and, uh, Charlie, just for the record, would you, um, also, uh, state your last name and what town you're, you're from?
I'm, uh, I'm sorry, last name is Dickerson. I'm from the, I'm from the city of Montpelier.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Used to be in District Three, but somebody moved me.
So, okay, so, um.
Just kind of curious because the part that bothers me as a citizen goes back to something Bill said earlier. The city apparently was unaware of this project when it started. Now, not only is that rude, but I think the state has an obligation. To coordinate with municipalities if it's going to start construction. And at the very least, I, and I appreciate Tom, that John Dunlevy, who does work in the Attorney General's office. And is assigned to transportation made probably that comment or that. His, uh, observation back twenty, thirty years ago. But I think it's worth doing a little bit more homework. And my other question is, though, the portion of Berry Street that's going to be used. For the quote unquote rail. Has that rail line been surveyed and does the state have a copy of the survey in its file? And if not, why not?
Um, I believe the, uh, the, the rail line is being resurveyed. I think for the third time since I've been here by the, by the state. It was done by Bike Path Engineer, then by, I forget the name of the surveyor for Agency of Transportation. And now, um, Vermont Survey and Engineering has, um, been, um, tasked with, uh, resur surveying. And again, I, I'm not sure why, but we've been feeding them all of our records and helping with that effort, so. So it's, imagine the, the rail line laid out in the, uh. Late eighteen hundreds, um, it's kind of difficult to follow. They use, um, they use. You know, bearings and distances that don't really match a lot of things. They use, um, rail standard lines. So it's, it's not, it's not real easy to survey. So they, they, they have a survey, they're, they're redoing it to check it.
All right, well, thank you. And, um. So anyone else have, uh, comments or questions about, um, this?
I think John. I don't have his last name.
Um, John, are you raising your hand? No, okay.
Sorry, I, no ma'am, sorry. I'm the bad guy at the, at the auction. I just bought the.
Sorry about that. No worries. Okay, anyone else then? And by the way, Charlie, your point is well taken. Um, you know, we wish that we had had more notice for sure.
Need to do some homework.
Okay, so, uh, any other comments? Okay, all right, so I'm going to close. And Cameron, you're not seeing anyone else, right?
Ma'am.
Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing on this. Um, we have a proposal here. Would anyone like to make a motion? Uh, Jack?
I move that we approve the proposal to. And we approve, approve the proposal to close, uh, Berry Street through traffic as, uh. Proposed in the, uh, Department of Public Works memorandum. For the time, uh, set forth, starting on May twentieth and going through seven consecutive days. Or longer if necessary.
July twentieth?
I thought Jack said May.
Oh, I, I meant to say July if I didn't.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Okay, um, on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. Uh, all right, so we, uh, so the motion, uh, passes. And. So that, and we don't need to do any roll call because it was not unanimous, right? We're still just a part of the record, right?
It was not, it's not unanimous, you should probably do a roll call.
Yeah, it's not unanimous, you need to do a roll.
Okay. Um, okay, so I'm just going to go in the, uh, order that I, that you appear on my screen. Uh, so for, for me, that is, uh, Dan.
Aye.
Jack.
Aye.
Lauren.
Aye.
Connor.
Aye.
Donna.
Aye.
And Jay.
Aye.
Okay, so I believe the ayes, um, have it, the, so the motion passes and, um. So we are going to move on. So, um, the next, uh, item is, uh, the, uh, proposed, uh, street closure for state street. For, um, a justice for all, um, or I'm sorry, liberty and justice for all, uh, mural. So for this, just to explain how this item is going to go. I, uh, assume John, who has his, uh, uh, video on, that that's, uh, are you John Clark? Yes, okay, great. Um, and I think I saw Erica Reddick on as well. I don't know if, um, either of you would like to, um, speak, but we'll, um. So what, the way we're going to, we're going to do this is, um, we'll hear from either of you or both of you. And then, um. Uh, I've got a, just a clarifying background, uh, comment to make. And then we will hear from the public and, uh, and then we, as the council, will have our discussion. Hopefully that makes sense to everybody. Um, so that's just, just to frame it up here. And, uh, so either, uh, John or Erica, would you like to, um, uh, tell us about this proposal? Go ahead, John.
That would be me. Sorry, I thought you would unmute me. Now I can buy the cow. Um, Erica, good evening, everyone. John Clark, how are you? John Clark, uh, from Brookfield, Vermont, Clark2020.com. Erica, I don't believe we'll be speaking, though she is a candidate, uh, who's part of my group. Alice Flanders, I believe is still on and she had jumped in earlier, uh, jumping the gun a little. She's, uh, got a lot of them in vigor. So she, she may, uh, I, I, I'm hoping we'll be, I'll be able to speak briefly. As you all know, this was, um, an application we put in rather short notice before the Fourth of July celebration. This was ancillary to an event that I had been asked to speak at. Um, celebrating the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution and other documents. And in which I did specifically address many citizens' concerns about the legislature and the state. Uh, government taking steps that compromise certain constitutional rights. Uh, this, this, uh, application was denied either through this border administratively. It didn't, I don't know that it was acted upon as a group. Um, and so we refiled. So, um, the application explains its intent. Uh, there should be no need to defend the flag or the Pledge of Allegiance or our police officers. Who we also were celebrating, the good police officers that we rely upon. Uh, procedurally, I'd like to point out that now that July fourth has passed. Uh, this council, if it wishes to delay our event until after the BLM project is complete. Uh, that's certainly within your, uh, uh, your discretion and, uh, you know, time, place and manner restrictions. Um, our urgency originally inflating was for Fourth of July. Uh, but we shouldn't be deprived, uh, or restricted from our celebration of our constitution. Because, you know, our heritage is very important for many of us. And we shouldn't be restricted because a public space was preempted by a social or political movement of any variety. Um, but now I, I would like to point out, because it's clearly got a lot of public attention here. But a city councillor has weighed in on this rather recklessly and malign my intentions and those of. The other people who are behind this application. And it's very concerning because that's rather inflammatory to impose, uh, a toxic invective on my motives. And my credentials and my abilities. I don't really care about my campaign, but I have a lot of people running with me. And, uh, we really don't need to be inflaming the conflict over race in Vermont especially, but anywhere. Uh, by imputing motives to people that you have no business as a, as a public servant to do. It's really a violation. So I hope he's not stoking conflict on purpose. This is our state capital. You guys know that, I'm sure. And so even though I'm out of town, it is, it is the state capital and the, uh, the symbol of our laws and our rule. Uh, but Connor Casey has actually said, uh, that this application is an act of white fragility. Um, I submit that he should recuse himself from consideration of this hearing, at this hearing, since he's already indicated how he's going to vote. Itself a rather blatant violation of due process and we are entitled to that, even though this is a privilege. Constitutionally, a public entity is prohibited from favoring one political, ethnic or social group. Over others, uh, it's called the content neutrality principle. And whether in law or as applied, it does apply to this situation. Uh, this has been utterly disregarded by Mr. Casey. He did me and my people a favor, uh, by showing his blatant ballot bias. Uh, there are many Vermonters who, who wished and continue to wish to celebrate our liberty and our historical documents. There is a general complaint by many against our government's overreach, as I explained again in my, uh, speech on Saturday. So I speak for a lot of Vermonters in trying to secure our constitution as the middle ground. Between perhaps different perspectives on how to proceed to solve a problem that we all agree needs to be addressed. No one is supporting police brutality. No one wishes to see people impoverished or compromised or oppressed because of their race. Uh, but I also speak for about, as I say, thirty, two thousand and twenty candidates, uh, for state office. And they have joined me and are running on a specific policy list, uh, which includes holding government accountable. Not only with money, as you folks are talking about tonight, but also with our rights and our constitution. And I expect that all of those candidates support this application. But since white people like Connor Casey, tell white people like me. That my words must be dismissed because of my white skin. I have invited just one of our many fine candidates, uh, Alice Flanders, to briefly address as a person of color. The motive behind this application, which she is a party to, and why it must be approved. You really have to approve it because you have to maintain content neutrality. So that would be my submission. In summary, I again, uh, ask the, the council to, uh, perhaps reread the original application. And I'm hoping that Alice might speak briefly because she also has some information to share about this day. Um, Alice Flanders, I hope you're still with us.
Um, so I think, uh, probably the. Probably the appropriate thing to have happen would be to have Alice speak as a part of the public. I mean, unless, um, unless she's a sort of a part of your presentation, which I mean, I suppose she could be.
Well, she is, as I specifically referenced, I think she has a very, uh, strong voice and she is a candidate. And John Clark, her governor, really is a collective, will actually be announcing a, a number of new candidates on the sixteenth at the State House. Uh, a lot of people running behind three policy issues and she's been, uh, along with our team since day one. So she, I think, is well qualified as a veteran and as a person of color to, uh, to counter. The potential toxicity planted in the public by open public comments, uh, maligning me and this motive here. I think that her testimony is particularly cogent to undo the potential to cause more friction rather than comity and reconciliation. So I, I, I hope she's still there, but I would, I would love to hear what she has. And I think also the council may want to hear something she found research, she's still with us.
All right, Alice, if you are here, oh, you've unmuted yourself. Great, go ahead, Alice.
I unmuted myself, but can you see my wonderful face?
No.
Oh, too bad. All in glamorous, glorious color. Uh, I am a person of color, uh, that has never. Or hardly ever played any part in my professional, certainly never in my professional, uh, career. And, uh, even in, uh, business or, uh, personal issues, it's never really come up as, uh. Being important. You should understand first of all, that I'm not new to, uh, the concept of having. Been a person who may have been part of a group that was, uh. Not allowed, uh, certain liberties and then later, uh, given that free opportunity. I grew up during the time, and I remember the time when Dr. Martin Luther King was assassinated. He wore, uh, he, on his assassination time, I remember people like this, uh, Black Lives Matter. And look, I'm, can I be honest with you? I want, I don't want anybody to say anything. I just want you to nod your head. If you want to hear the perspective of this grandmother, just nod your head. I'm not going to be long. Can you, can I be honest? Or do I have to toe the party line? All right, well, and I will honestly tell you, I'm a sixty-five-year-old grandmother, even though I don't even look like I'm that old. Believe me, I keep healthy. But I was around when integration became the law of the land in this country. I was around when Martin Luther King was assassinated. I have been well read and I have, I was part of the, the forefront. When I was allowed at the, at great cost to my parents to enter me into government, uh, into a non-government school. Private schools, all-girls schools. And I had to work, as they say, twice as hard to get the same grade. Because look, in math, if it's not all right, you can mark it all wrong. Even if most of the people get partial credit, I got none. Well, no problem. I was motivated to work a little bit. Well, no problem, I was motivated to work a little bit harder, till I got them all right. And you can't argue with that. But that only made me stronger. And you know, when the girls I went to school with found that I was a viable candidate for their math team as a sophomore, they appointed me the captain of the junior math team. And I was the only person of color there. Then, and it, and these girls came from traditional families that were not black, I promise you. And then, uh, continuing with that same, um, spirit, uh, because I am very competitive, in my junior year, I was appointed captain of the senior math team. And all of the girls, we won. We beat those guys, we beat those girls, we beat everybody. And I had a number of things, including going to, uh, university. I eventually became a physics major turned math major. I was accepted at an MIT Lincoln Lab work study, worked in a group that had just launched two communications satellites. I had to prove that I had the capability of doing the work as part of that Lincoln Lab, uh, MIT Lincoln Lab group. The guy explained to me some, you know, cyclotomic polynomials, you know, programming. Yeah, I've had BASIC and FORTRAN and some assembly language. And if you want, um, that's, I can show you. He said, "Well, if I could write a program." Within the week, I came back with the program to generate the coefficients of the cyclotomic polynomials that was explained to me in concept. And if I hadn't been able to do that, then I probably would have been made part of the clerical staff, uh, during that program when I was there. But I was capable. And you know, once people understood that I did have that capability, the doors were wide open. Why would you, why wouldn't you? If you have, and later, I joined the military after I, after I had competed successfully and studied for a year. As a physics student, I studied in France under a scholarship at a prestigious university, uh, Montpellier University, where only perhaps twelve percent of those who matriculate from their, uh, secondary education in France have the privilege of going on to further studies. Unlike a lot of kids here who think that everybody has the right to go to college at the expense of the taxpayers. The French did not look at it that way. You had to demonstrate that you could contribute to the national effort to make it worth the taxpayers' effort to pay for you, not for your party. And later I joined the military. I was able, I was successfully able to compete, or at least to join, uh, this, the group that had, they had just started Navy Space. And I was a Space Systems Engineering and Space Systems Operations student at the graduate level. But I promise you, if I had not been capable of working with my group that was designing the deployment of the antenna on the, on a satellite in that group where I was working, I wouldn't have been there. I would say that such groups, now, given that, and also my father, by the way, was a freedom rider before he married. He was one of, he put his life on the line. And he went in and helped people in Mississippi earn their right to, uh, to register to vote. I see, I, I don't want to say, I'm not saying white privilege, because I have been on both sides, believe it or not. And the, the ceiling was and is broken. I have been, I, I'm, I have been to here in Vermont, to the, um, Constitution House, uh, where it says Constitution House. And there's a, I should, if I could send you an email, Anne, and you could send it to everybody else. But very quickly, I'll tell you, it's a marquee there at the Constitution House here in Vermont that says Windsor settled seventeen sixty-four, became the political center of the upper constant, uh, Upper Connecticut River Valley. Here, the Constitution of the Free and Independent State of Vermont was adapt, uh, was adopted at the tavern of Elijah West on July eighth, seventeen seventy-seven. Today is the birthday of the, of the Free and Independent State of Vermont Constitution. Happy birthday to you. Okay, was adopted at the tavern, um, uh, of Elijah West on July eighth, seventeen seventy-seven. This constitution was the first to prohibit slavery and establish universal manhood suffrage. Vermont was an independent republic until seventeen ninety-one, when it was admitted into the Union as the fourteenth state. I don't believe, as a military officer, in solving problems that are already fixed. I don't believe in fixing problems that are not broken. We here in the state of Vermont do not have a problem. I wanted to, I'm telling you honestly, look, you're not looking at my face, but I'm looking at yours. And I want to take off our masks of red and blue. Because when you are in that position where you are right now, you're representing all of us. If you're not, please step down. Okay, so here we are, here we are, dear people. Black lives matter. I'm not saying they don't, but I'm telling you that all lives matter. Now, I know that that's anathema to some people. But if you could see a picture of my wonderful family, because you know what? I did believe what Dr. Martin Luther King said. Take a deep breath and swallow hard. I want you to know that when I went to MIT Lincoln Lab, I met a young man from Vermont. His name was Jeffrey Flanders. His father was James Hartness Flanders, who wasn't, was a MIT engineering graduate, graduate-level graduate. He became, and he was the chairman of the American Institute of Aeronautics and Astronautics when he died. That was my father-in-law. Jeff's grandfather was Senator Ralph Flanders of Vermont. You may not know your history, but I'm going to, I'm going to teach you a little bit right now. When McCarthy stood up and was bullying everybody into a particular perspective, that brave Vermonter, that brave Vermonter was not afraid to stand up respectfully, but very clearly articulate what the problems were as he saw it. And you know, McCarthyism came to an end because of that lone, that first step of the lone rider, that man. Jeff's great-grandfather was Governor James Hartness. Springfield, Vermont has, um, a, a telescope, the Hartness House Telescope, if you all don't know it. Because in addition to being governor, he was also an avid, um, scientist and engineer. Look, people, I met Jeff when I was, after my first year as a physics student, when I was accepted to MIT Lincoln Lab. It took me five years to, to, okay, so I will, and we got married. We have a daughter. We have grandchildren. If you were to look at my grandchildren, I don't know. My first two oldest have red hair, and their eyes, and they're fair-skinned, because our daughter married a Brit. And you couldn't, and they're, and Jake hit freckles and burns very readily. I believed Dr. Martin Luther King, are you all going to tell me that he lied? To have such a dream that someday he would be judged by the content of his character and not by the color of his skin. I am suspicious of Black Lives Matter. I'm going on the record to tell you so. I'm telling you, because I have been there and you have not. I have been there. And you know what? For all these years that people have judged me as an engineer, as a mathematician, just based on my personal and my professional qualifications. Now, when you look at me, you dare not overlook the fact that my skin has a lot of melanin. We are stepping backwards. Am I saying black lives don't matter? No, but you want to know something? I have seen the academic scores of our young people here in Vermont. And I know COVID is going to put a good cover on all of this. But it doesn't override what's happened in the last few years, and our academic scores have been below the national average. And yet, with all of that, we have time and we have resources to perpetrate upon our population, the next generation of Vermont citizens, our resources. We have time and money and resources to tell them about how black lives matter. We're taking a step back, people. I want you to hold up to liberty and justice for all. Can we all say that we could at least stand to that? Why do we have to genuflect in order to say it? I do not. I suspect black lives matter, because if you, you look at where the money goes if you donate there, okay? Because I was the money guy at the Pentagon. I managed about a billion dollars a year, and I was especially good at it.
So Alice, I'm going to interrupt you here real quick, it's, um, been about ten minutes.
Okay, and do you understand what I've been saying, though?
Oh, yeah, no, and, but if you have any, like, just final, like, thoughts?
Okay, my final thoughts are this. You can go ahead and preferentially approve of Black Lives Matter, and then turn your back on liberty and justice for all. But history will judge it. I want you to stand and support. Connor, I want you to say, "All right, John, I'm sorry, I jumped the gun." Liberty and justice for all, of course I'm for that. Black lives matter, brown lives matter, pink and purple foggy dot lives matter too, my chickens' lives matter. But yes, liberty and justice for all, we Vermonters can all rally behind that. I want to stand with you. I want you to stand with me. Can we put it into it there?
Sounds great, thank you, Alice, thank you for sharing.
You're welcome, I'm going to put myself back on mute.
Okay.
Just to, so I won't be tempted to say something more.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, so, um, I'm going to, um, take a step back and share something that, um, our lawyer shared with us, uh, today, actually. Uh, just to give us a little bit of context and some clarity around, um, some of the questions that have actually already been, um, that have come up. Um, and then, uh, we're going to open it up to the public. And it, and, um, and so because Alice was a, a part of, uh, their presentation, we gave, um, her some additional time. But, uh, for other folks who speak, just to remind her, please try to keep your comments to two minutes or less. And, um, and actually, um, uh, at some point, uh, we should get, uh, Alice's last name and what town she lives in. Um, we can do that probably later. Um, Bill, that wasn't a hand, was it? No, thought I saw a hand. Okay, just checking.
Same with Flanders.
Oh, Flanders, that's right, yes, yes, she said that, thank you. Uh, great, all right, so, um, so we sort of anticipated that there'd be a question about whether or not the city was obligated to approve the request, you know, either, uh, sort of as a, as a street closure or based on the content. But mostly, folks, uh, I think there's this, um, actually what I would call a misunderstanding of floating around, that we are obligated to approve this, uh, based on the First Amendment. Um, and the reason I can say that is because we got clarity from our, uh, lawyer, uh, earlier today. And I just want to, um, just, um, read part of the, the excerpt from our lawyer, just so that everybody has the same information. So it's going to take me a little bit to read it here, but I think it's probably worth doing. So, um, underlying the potential First Amendment argument is the notion that the street is a public forum, which the city has opened up for private citizens to convey their messages to the world. In the context of a public forum, for example, when the city allows climate change activists to protest on, uh, in, in a city park, the First Amendment generally requires the city to give equal opportunity to all who want to use that public forum to voice their own message. Uh, the city must give citizens, uh, of all viewpoints their time on the, the public soapbox, regardless of whether the city agrees with the citizens' viewpoints. In these examples, um, and I, I skipped a couple of, um, cases, but there are some, uh, cases cited. In these, uh, in these examples, it is clear who is speaking. A private citizen is holding a sign or audibly chanting. They just happen to be standing on government property. Generally, in such cases, the government can, within reason, restrict the time, place, and manner of protests, demonstrations, or other expressive content, uh, conduct. Uh, but the government cannot deny a request to speak or demonstrate in the public forum based on the content or viewpoint of the requester's message. In other words, the government cannot give preferential treatment to certain points of view in certain, uh, citizens over, or, or certain citizens over others. The display of a mural, monument, or other expressive symbol on government property is legally different. Unless circumstances clearly indicate that such displays reflect solely the viewpoint of a private citizen, courts typically consider these displays to be government speech. The US Supreme Court has explained, "When government speaks, it is not barred by the Free Speech Clause from determining the content of what it says." That freedom, in part, reflects the fact that it is the democratic electoral process that first and foremost provides a check on government speech. Thus, government statements and government actions and programs that take the form of speech do not normally trigger the First Amendment rules designed to protect the marketplace of ideas. Instead, the Free Speech Clause helps produce informed opinions among members of the public, who are then able to influence the choices of a government that through, through words and deeds will reflect its electoral mandate. So I hope that that, um, just sheds some light for folks on what we are obligated to do or not. But, uh, the question still remains what, what we will do. Um, so at this point, um, I would, uh, open up the floor to, uh, public comment. So, um, is there, um, I'd just love to get a, a cue here, uh, folks who would like to comment. Uh, Cameron?
I have, um, Maggie Prince has raised her hand, and then we had, um, Tracy Conino, and I'm sorry if I'm overturning y'all's names, I'm just saying, uh, phonetically, um, had asked us to speak, um, via email, and I saw that she was on the line.
Okay, so those are the two so far? And then I saw, uh, John, you have, uh, something that you would like to say as well? Uh, so I may, I may go, uh, John.
Very brief.
Sure, sure, I'll, I'll, I'll have you go first, and then we'll go, um, Maggie and then Tracy. And there's no one else so far yet, uh, Cameron, is that right?
No, and so.
I saw someone, Connor, not Connor Casey, came on and looked like they were waving their hand, too.
They just raised their hand, so we have Connor as well.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you. Um, all right, uh, John, go ahead.
So as an attorney who has worked in free speech law for years, I would just, uh, point out that I would rather not have litigation on the matter, because I think we all would rather not have that. Whatever you've just read from your attorneys, you clearly do have the power also to grant this. And it's a gray area about what's a mural and other forms of speech. This is core political speech. So if you, what you've done, though, what you've just read to me, is an opinion of counsel that was solicited for the specific purpose of finding legal grounds to deny this application, which I would say also shows a bias. But moreover, in the very words you read, it said, um, undermining the free speech argument. So I, I would hope that this council would not be out to undermine our free speech argument, but to embrace our free speech argument, especially when what's in the balance is something as highly visible as the US flag and, uh, the Pledge of Allegiance and our police. So I, you know, legally, I don't agree with your counsel. I don't really want to fight it out in court. I just want to have the opportunity, uh, when Black Lives Matter is done, to display our nation's heritage in a proud way to affirm it. to display our nation's heritage in a proud way to affirm it for all of us as the middle row. But anyway, thanks. That's I appreciate you allowing me to just add that for the record.
Thank you. Bill, go ahead.
Yep, if I may, because we did talk earlier or there was talk earlier about not imputing people's intentions. The city council did not ask for an opinion. I did. And the question was specifically asked, are there any legal barriers to them approving or denying the question that was not asked? Find a way to deny it. So I just would appreciate you made a good point about not presupposing other people's intentions. And I think maybe you just did that on my behalf, so.
Well, just to be clear, though, there was nothing in the opinion to suggest any reason why the why you would not be able to deny it. So it's one sided, whether or not that's what you specifically solicited, forgive me, to impugn it. But that's what it looks like. And that's part of the.
If we were required to if we were required to approve it, it would have said that. And so you're saying, here's the argument for why you might approve it. Here's the argument for why you don't. I could I'd be happy to send you the full opinion.
Yeah, and I did not read the whole.
Well, I'll have to look at it if there if the lawyers are wrong. But anyway, sorry, go ahead. So I'm just saying there are different views and it's not that clear. It's a big area of law. But so thank you. So I don't mean to impugn your integrity, Bill.
Okay, Maggie?
Go on video for this. Hi, guys. Maggie Lenz. I'm a District One resident. I really want to keep this short. I hope that we're all going to stop suspending disbelief and pretend that this is anything from Mr. Clark other than a really cheap political move. I think it's clear to all of us that that's what this is. This is a struggling campaign that's trying to get attention. I don't think that he needs any assistance by Mr. K. Bring that. This is this time for the Black Lives Matter movement. I appreciate Noel and that the council did on this. As a Montpelier resident, that sign is extremely important. It's a reminder of the work to do. Alice, thank you so much for your point of view. I certainly can't speak from personal experience and disagree with your experience. I'm glad you have. But I do have a number of friends of color that have not had that same experience here. And I think just by virtue of being states, we have a lot of work to do. To write any message, to add an addendum to the Black Lives Matter mural will dilute the message and will take away from the work that we need. It's been pointed out to the council numerous times. This isn't a stand in for real meaningful work, but it is a reminder and it's important. Begging you to please deny this application. Don't dilute this message for a political stunt. Thank you for all your work.
Tracy? Yes, we can hear you, but it's a little tough to hear you. Say a little bit more.
Tracy, I'm so sorry. It's very hard to hear y'all. If you turn your camera off, it's sometimes easier to hear the audio because it improves the connection.
Just go for it.
I wonder if she's live streaming. If you're live streaming the meeting, we had this problem earlier on.
Whoa, that's right. Yeah, you may want to like if you're watching it in a different window or something, you may want to close that.
Or she may want to call us.
Yeah. It's about the same. But yeah, go. I mean, if you want to go for it, we will do our best to hear you. Tracy, I'm actually going to interrupt you. I think it might make maybe you can call in on a cellphone or so. What do you think about that?
Hold on, and I will read it to you. I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. Two seconds. Okay, so the number is area code nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine. And then they're going to ask you for a meeting ID. The meeting ID is nine two eight three five eight six three one four zero. And if it asks you for a password, it's zero nine zero nine five three.
Did you get that, Cameron?
I cannot figure out which number you're asking me to repeat.
A number. Is it a two or a zero?
Two or zero?
I'm not sure. Okay, I got you. It's nine two nine two.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Sorry, guys, we're all getting this together.
And so we're going to skip to Connor. And then hopefully Tracy will be back on the line with us and we can hear from them next. Connor, go ahead.
Thank you all. Connor Kennedy of the Montpelier. As much as there's been quite a few things that have been said tonight that I would love to dissect and understand the actual factual nature of some of the comments, I'm going to leave it to the issue at hand, which is the matter of whether or not liberty and justice for all should be placed in front of the State House. I think the premise on why it should be there is problematic in itself in that when that was first stated, it was all white men that decided that it was liberty and justice for all. It was clearly not a diverse group of individuals that were making that decision. We've seen throughout our history that people have been disproportionately affected by those that have created it. I think we have a great country. I agree with Mr. Clark that, you know, we should celebrate this. But we also have to understand that it is not equally great for every individual in this country. I'd like to acquit it. I saw this in a video. If someone's house is on fire, this is what Black Lives Matter is saying. And then you say, well, what about my house? That's the all lives are liberty and justice for all fire. You're trying to make the fact that someone's house on fire is not important in that moment. Everyone's life might be important, but in this moment, there is a huge need to support these individuals that are crying for help. They've been crying for help for centuries. And if we take this moment to try to paint over, literally paint over, this important message, I just think it's incredibly problematic. I would encourage people to look at the public messages and commentaries that are out there from Mr. Clark. I think it speaks for themselves. I have a hard time believing that this is genuine on its face. I think we all can appreciate that this is a country that we wish to be great. But in this moment, it is certainly not great for every U.S. citizen. I understand that one of the speakers said that she feels that they have had a great life here. I've had friends that are people of color that have moved from the state because of the interactions that they've had here, and it is just so unfortunate. I know we like to think that we are this great progressive place, but we have so much work to do in the state across the country. And I think it would be a terrible disservice to try to literally bracket the message of Black Lives Matter with this other message. It just seems so incredibly disingenuous in this time. The one thing I will say, I saw before to the Mr. Clark that proposed this about his character being attacked. You are running for public officer. I've ran for public office myself. I hope you're ready for it because it does not stop. You have to stand behind the messages that you put out there. So thank you for your time. I hope that you do not support this proposal. It's incredibly disingenuous and we need to do focus our work on the issue at hand, which is making sure Vermont and this country has equal access for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. So just checking in, Tracy, and I didn't see the other person's name. But Tracy, are you on?
Didn't see a new phone number, but I also just emailed her. So while we're waiting, we did have another person raise their hand, Meg Walls.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Sorry, is this this is Meg?
Yes.
Okay, go for it, Meg.
My name is Meg Walls.
Yeah, and say where you're from.
And I'm from Montpelier. I can't remember my district number. Sorry. But I'm going to keep this very brief. I echo everything that Maggie and Connor said before, and I am opposed to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
To mute herself on her camera. There you go.
All right, Tracy, did y'all call in?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, and we can hear you well even. Okay, go ahead.
Technology. Yes, so I'm also here. We're in District One. Tracy Canino, Scott Robertson, and Adam Robertson is also here with me. So there's three of us in the household. And I just wanted to say that I agree with the other Montpelier citizens who've spoken this evening. It's not that there can be that much disagreement about the wonderful phrase, you know, justice for all, but that the timing of this is very inappropriate. We need to sit with the uncomfortableness that we have with the Black Lives Matter saying that is in our city. Because that is what we need to be reflecting on right now so that we can work upon ourselves and improve ourselves. And so that we can move forward with trying to find the equity and the equality that that needs to be there. And that the timing of trying to add something to that would be would be to dilute dilute the message that is already there. Not that it can't be there at some point, and not that it shouldn't be there at some point. But it's exceptionally unfortunate that people would feel so strongly to try to force that to be in the conversation at this point, to dilute the message that is already part of the conversation now that that we need to do because we need to do the work, not just in saying that kind of a phrase, but in showing up for our neighbors and doing things in our community and changing our policies to make that happen. And, you know, Alice gave an exceptionally passionate speech. She's such a wonderful speaker. And she has so many great qualifications. And certainly, I don't have any of that. But I do feel very strongly that I think that, you know, even in my ordinariness, that, you know, we need to have the first conversation first before we dilute it and get back to this red, white, and blue phrase from the Constitution that perhaps it's not yet time to have that conversation because we're not there yet.
Adam and Scott agree with that, Satan. Thank you, Tracy.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have to say something at this point because the conversations that we're having right now, the topics seem to be, well, we have a pressing pressure problem on us and we have to address it. But you want to know something? I'm 65 years old and I've been doing this for a while. Isn't it convenient that this comes up just around the time when we have elections? And isn't it convenient that when you donate money to Black Lives Matter, it goes to Gold Blue or wherever that thing is? And no, it doesn't go to the DNC directly, but they contributed hundreds of thousands to the Democratic candidates. Isn't it convenient that for decades that there's there have been there's been violence in black communities across the country? And yet, nobody speaks about that. What about the little eight-year-old girl who was shot in the back of her mother's car? What about the six-year-old girl whose father was shot? Nobody's talking about that because it does not fit the narrative. Now, I want you to know, I don't think we have a problem here in Vermont. And I'm not saying that your friends, your friend, I'm not even saying they're talking friends because I lived my life. And I have been working very hard in support of issues of equality for all people. All of my students have always felt they'd get a fair shake from Mrs. Flanders, black, white, or grizzly gray. But isn't it just convenient that it comes up at the time of elections more than at other times? And isn't it so disappointing that these issues that I did mention never get any space in the in the media?
Thank you. Cameron, do we have anyone else in the queue?
Erica Reddick has raised her hand.
Okay, Erica, are you ready to go?
I am. Thank you. And I apologize, my video will not turn on. I'm not sure what my technical difficulty is, so I apologize.
Okay.
And I just want to say, I understand for the record, I am not a Montpelier resident. And so I understand that my perspective does not have as much weight. But the reason I support John's.
Sorry, before you get into it, where do you live?
I, oh, yes, I live in Burlington. I'm a resident of Burlington.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
The reason that my husband and I support this this mural proposal is because we are in an interracial couple or we are in an interracial marriage. And so we've had these conversations. We've been having these conversations about racial reconciliation and what that looks like and what's required for many, many years. And so we're very glad that the Black Lives Matter movement has highlighted areas where black people have legitimate grievances against certain systems, certain cities, certain people. He's a filmmaker, so we understand he's we've dealt with discrimination issues as a dark-skinned black man with him getting, you know, the roles for a couple of years. All he got from his agent were thug number one, drug dealer number two, and stuff like that. And that's and that's so so we know very personally what it looks like to be championing these causes and moving the black movement or pushing the black excellence moving forward. We work with at-risk youth. We donate our time and our energy. We are also very proud Americans who believe very much in the founding promise that all men are created equal. And while this country has not always lived up to its founding ideals, it has, with every successive generation, done better and better and better. The United States is the story of progressive sanctification. This is the greatest country on earth. And while we are not perfect, we are always looking to get better, and I love that. What concerns me is that the BLM messaging is very divisive. It is very, very divisive. And as an interracial couple and the things that we're dealing with and the way that people are talking is so in many ways, very much profoundly missing the point of moving this country forward. in many ways, very much profoundly missing the point of moving this country forward. And so it is in our opinion that with liberty and justice for all is not a response to the BLM. It's not in addition to, it's not trying to cover up. It is an affirmation that this country is created for everyone, and that everyone has equal rights, equal justice, equal under the law. And so I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Cameron, anyone else?
Um, I do not see anyone. Now would be the time to throw up a blue hand or emoji or a physical wave.
Okay. All right, so I'm not seeing anyone else either. So I have, I have my own thoughts, but I'm sure you all do as well. So I'm happy to have other folks start if you would like, or I'll jump in. Connor, go ahead.
Well, I, I feel the need to respond a bit since my name was brought up by John Clark in the beginning. And I'll say, like, a few weeks ago, when we painted the Black Lives Matter mural, that was a beautiful painting. We had 300 people come from all over the states. New Americans, families, you know, everybody was adding and, and painting that mural. And it was just a very basic affirmation of the values we hold, and was a message to elected officials that, you know, when you drive down state streets, you know, please keep that in mind as you make policy. It was a message to us, too. It didn't say black lives are the best. It didn't say black lives are the only lives that matter. But the amount of angst this has caused with being vandalized within 24 hours of being painted, vandalized again a couple of days later, just shows, I think, need to paint it to begin with, and how far we have to come. I'm not, I'm not against the concept of liberty and justice for all. I think it's a great aspirational statement, but right now it's a farce in America. And, you know, I, I, I think, you know, maybe something to aspire to, but until we can recognize that black lives matter, I don't think liberty and justice for all is alive and well in America. So I apologize, Mr. Clark, if I am doubting your intentions with coming in here with this request, but I, I read some of your commentary pieces, and, you know, I find them offensive. Commentary piece is called Reverse Racism, where you talk about black culture is rife with anti-white references and themes, and this has been tolerated presumably because of white guilt. You have other pieces where you say you're a victim because of your dark complexion. You've been a victim in Vermont because of this. You've questioned whether systemic racism even exists in Vermont. And I think worst of all, you know, you have a bit of a history with us in Montpelier, too, John. When the Black Lives Matter flag was flown, you wrote a commentary piece, come out against this, using a quote from Audra Lord, who I'm sure would love that you're using the quote at the end of this, where you say, expecting a marginalized group to educate the oppressors is the continuation of racist patriarchal thoughts. And then you add, by that measure, the schools that permitted the BLM flag assisted their black students to become Uncle Toms. Those students, John, were the same ones who graduated Montpelier High School, who are the ones who organized this event in a beautiful, organic display of unity. And when I hear you say that, I don't want a drop of your paint going next to the mural that they worked on. You say, we're trying to politicize this, but I don't think there's any center with racism. I'm not interested in meeting somebody in the center as a show of unity if they don't believe black lives matter. And sure enough, I don't think all conservatives are racist either, John, but, but I definitely think you are. So I'll absolutely oppose this. I'll oppose this. This is government speech, and I don't want to be a part of your political spunt. And honestly, I've been on the record way too much already, giving you the press that you desperately craving for. And I, I, I think it's sad. I, I won't say anymore. That's it. You know where I stand?
Thank you. Jack?
Thank you. I've been struggling with this issue because when, you know, I've somewhat for many years has considered myself a First Amendment freedom of speech absolutist. And I think there's a certain appeal to the idea that content, that the, the rule of content neutral regulation should apply here. And that is the standard that Mr. Clark brought before us in his, is, in his remarks. However, I went beyond that to do, do some legal research. And in fact, the standard that Mr. Clark stated is not the legal standard that applies to, to this situation. And, and the legal standard that I believe is the correct legal standard is the principle enunciated Lesn Bro versus Summum, Supreme Court decision from 2009, which says that in fact, if, if a municipality makes a decision to give over public property for monuments, that those, that choice to dedicate that public property is a policy determination by the municipal government, and it is speech by the government. I think it's clear that painting a mural on, on public streets is the same as erecting a monument in a city park in that the people who observe that monument or the sign will see it and conclude that it is not the opinion of whoever might have painted it there, but the opinion of the municipality. It's also, painting a sign on the public street is different from allowing a march because of the Supreme Court pointed out, the march ends, the leaflets are given away, and, and then they leave. Whereas the monument or the painting on the public street endures as a statement of that public policy. So I've said many times in this council that I believe that we should listen to the legal advice we receive from our attorney, and I, I believe that today, too. And I'm happy to see that the legal advice we get from the attorney is the same advice that I would be giving, giving if I were giving legal advice to the city. That leads me to the conclusion that we are not required to provide an opportunity for a different private organization to, to paint their message to stand in contrast to the message of Black Lives Matter. And it's clear to me that although we, the resolution adopted by the, by the city council at our meeting was to close State Street for the purposes of allowing someone else to paint Black Lives Matter on the road, it's clear to me that when we took that action, we were expressing unanimously the view of the city council that we adopted value of Black Lives Matter. So that's all going to, is it permissible for us to deny the application? And I would say that it clearly is. The next question then is, is it the, the right thing to do to deny the application? And I again think it is. Contrary to what the speaker said, the message of Black Lives Matter is not divisive. It is a principle that, that in my view, our city council, the great majority of, of the residents of our city, and, and most of the residents of the state, I think, strongly, strongly believe in. And I think the person who's being divisive, in fact, is Mr. Clark. In his, on his campaign webpage, his commentary today bears the headline, "BLM Versus The United States Flag In Vermont Capitol." I do not believe that Black Lives Matter is challenging or standing up against the United States flag. I fly a United States flag in front of my house, but I oppose the message. I do not believe that is complimentary to the Black Lives Matter message. I do not believe it's intended to be complimentary to the Black Lives Matter message. And I also oppose the request. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Lauren?
Yeah, thanks. Just wanted to start out by acknowledging that I have heard from no constituents who wanted this painting. I only heard from people in Montpelier who opposed it. In the application, the Clark campaign claimed they were proposing this to create unity. And in fact, the entire reason we need to say Black Lives Matter in big, bold, yellow letters is because far too often we don't focus on black lives in the state and in this country. And the message they're putting forward seems entirely aimed at distracting from and undermining the message, Black Lives Matter. And it's using different words, but essentially conveys an all-lives-matter sentiment, which Alice confirmed earlier, is a sentiment that they really wanted to get across through this project. And as Connor mentioned, you know, seeing the vandalism on Montpelier street painting the very first night, people have torn down a Black Lives Matter flag in another Vermont community recently. There's been vandalizing, vandalizing happening in other Black Lives Matter street paintings across Vermont in the past few weeks. So seeing the reaction that this painting and this message is provoking, you know, just really underscores how much work we have to do as a state to address systemic racism and the white supremacy on which our society is built. I wholeheartedly agree that striving for liberty and justice for all is a great aspiration. As a woman who wasn't part of that, all men are created equal in our Constitution, we have a lot of work to do in a lot of regards. But I think at this moment in our nation's history, the path in striving for liberty and justice for all demands that we affirm that black lives matter. I believe we don't need to approve this. I strongly oppose it. I think it only serves to underscore the importance of the message, Black Lives Matter. And I just want to once again reiterate my appreciation for my fellow counselors and the community members who came together to approve the Black Lives Matter painting. I think it was a great project. And again, this whole conversation we're having tonight, I think, just reminds us all how much work we have to do and how important that message is to be putting out there in a big, bold, yellow message to our, our community members. Thanks.
Thank you. Dan, go ahead.
Thank you. So first, I want to say that I very much believe in the statement, liberty and justice for all. I believe in the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe in the Constitution of the United States and the Declaration of Independence and our founding documents. And I, I would echo Ms. Reddick's sentiment in large part that the United States has been a beacon of hope in the world, and it is a wonderful country. And it is an exceptional one in many, many ways. But that's not the issue that's before us. The issue before us is a specific application, to put that phrase, that doesn't appear in the Constitution, but appears in the Pledge of Allegiance, next to another statement that was painted on that street already. And the question is one of context. And I think it's important, you know, I agree with, with Jack. I did some research as well. I also believe, agree with the city attorney's analysis. You know, if we are to believe in these documents, the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence, then we have to believe that they have some meaning and that they don't warp to fit our own opinions. And in this case, the First Amendment protects in open forum, but it doesn't protect government speech. It allows governments to speak as, as they wish. Just as we pass resolutions for particular people, you know, if we pass a resolution praising Chief Facos, we don't have to pass a resolution praising Bob Gallens, the fire department chief, because he wants to be recognized. If we choose to paint hockey sticks on the street to recognize a team, Norwich, having a great victory, we don't have to paint basketballs on the street because the basketball fans want equal representation. These are things that we get to do a, as a government to express our, our voice, our, as a community. And the Constitution and the US Supreme Court do protect that, or do not require equal time, such as a public forum might have, such as often happens on the statehouse lawn, where competing private views are aired openly and equally. So if Mr. Clark wants to have a rally on July 3rd, he can. But if somebody else wants to have a rally, Connor Casey wants to have a rally on July 4th, he can as well. And these expressions can be voiced. So if we look at this question as one of, should we approve of this particular design in this particular place, in this particular time? I don't think it's a close question. I think it is something that ultimately tries to bracket and mixes a number of different messages. We have approved the Black Lives Matter. It has been installed. And that is the, I think that is the statement. If we want liberty and justice for all, which I think there's general support for as a philosophic content in another area, you know, I think that might be a different question, but that's not the question before us either. It's a question of if Black Lives Matter is on the street and liberty and justice for all, does that detract from the Black Lives Matter statement that we've made? And I think it does. I, I think it causes some context confusion. I think it mixes the messages. I think it detracts from the liberty and justice for all message, which is an aspirational message and should not be seen as a rejoinder to the Black Lives Matter statement. It, it is a higher principle that we found this country on. And to cause it to be put in that context, to serve as a, a statement against that, I, I don't agree with. And if I have the decision, which I do as a voting member of the city council, I don't support it. Do I support the statement, liberty and justice for all? 100%. I also want to defend Connor's right to speak, because that is a protected right under a First Amendment that we cherish. And Connor is not, we are not judges. We are not a court. He doesn't have to accuse himself. He's an elected city official. He is elected by the, the voting constituents of District Two, and he can express an opinion. And just as the legislature can express opinions and can come into committee meetings, and I have faced this, where I have seen legislators come into a committee, and I know they're going to vote against whatever I'm proposing. And that happens, and it happens here. And so to impugn him or to suggest that Connor's perspective somehow taints this process, I think is unfair to the democratic process that you have before you in the city council. And I think it's important to understand that Connor can express those, Mr. Casey can express those sentiments and still vote. And I would support that because he's a voting member of the city council, the constituents of District Two elected him. And if they disagree with him, they don't have to reelect him. But as long as he's a voting member, he, he's a fair, and I'll stand up for his right to express that opinion, whether I agree with it or whether I don't. I think that there has been a lot of impugning, and I, I won't impugn. I presume that everybody who has spoken tonight has spoken from the heart and has spoken from sincere feelings and beliefs. This is clearly an issue in which there is a lot of conversation that can be had as it of conversation that can be had, as it is 9:20, and we are still talking about it. But I think it's important to understand that as City Councilors, we're faced with a very specific decision. And this decision is whether or not this particular application, this particular design fits within an approvable construct that we're faced with making that choice. And I've already given my opinion, and I'm just one council member, but that's where I think I stand on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna, did you want to say anything? If not, that's okay.
No, I'll be brief, because I do want a bathroom break after this.
Oh, okay.
I just want to really thank everybody. And as Dan just said, it's part of our democracy that we all can come here and have our opinions. And as a fellow council member, thank heavens you all have opinions and all have different experiences. So I do feel the council has the right to make the decision. It did. I supported it, the Black Lives Matter. It should not be modified. And I do think it's the right thing to do. And I've just been absolutely personally moved every time I drive over it. And I watch cars slow down. It's an inspiration. And so if we ever do any in the future, I want to have that same feeling when I drive over it. Very affirmative, very unifying. So thank you all that we did this. That's all.
Thank you. I agree with all of the sentiments that have been shared. I agree particularly, Donna, that this feels like a modification of the Black Lives Matter mural. And while I also agree with the sentiment of liberty and justice for all, the context matters, the context, oh, yes. Sorry, I'm going to pause my thinking just now. Jay, Jay, did you want to jump in?
No, no, keep going.
No, good. You go.
But I stand, you know, I stand with all my other council members. I appreciate how articulate they've been and the different perspectives they bring to this argument. And I stand with all of you. Thank you.
Great. Sorry about that, Jay. Your picture is further down on my screen. So while I very much agree with the aspiration of liberty and justice for all, I think that is a noble and important sentiment to be pursuing as a country and as a community. The context matters. And in this case, I agree that it detracts. You know, so I also want to, I want to thank Dan for sticking up for Connor. Because Connor, yes, I agree that we all, it is perfectly okay for any of us to share our opinions about where we stand on any particular issue. And, you know, and we do listen to people. And sometimes our opinions change when we hear from folks. But nonetheless, it is perfectly fine to hear, or I'm sorry, to express where we're at, what we think about things. So, and thank you for your bravery there, Connor, for speaking out. And there's a couple other things that I wanted to just add. One is that the proposal does have an American flag printed on the ground, on the roadway. And I will just want to be on record as saying, I'm very uncomfortable with printing an American flag on the ground. I know it's not a cloth flag, but nonetheless, with the flag code, the American, the U.S. flag code, not allowing the flag to touch the ground, it just really rubs me the wrong way. And in fact, just in conversations that I've had with other people leading up to this meeting, came to find out that this is a practice of some other countries. They might print the flag of their enemy on the ground and then have their army march over it, right? So I do not want to have our flag printed on the ground. That is inappropriate. So, and beyond that, I agree with you all. And I don't want to really take more time than that. So having said all of that, I think everyone now has had an opportunity to weigh in. Is there anyone who would like to make a motion regarding this street closure? Connor?
I'll move to the neither cross.
So I think actually...
That's a point of order.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Dan.
Any motion has to be stated in the affirmative. And if you'll allow, I would make the motion to approve the street closure that has been applied for, for the Clark for Governor campaign.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, and all in favor, please say aye. And opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, I believe that was unanimous, so we don't need to do a rule call, and this motion fails. So regardless, thank you, everyone, for your thoughtfulness and for the discussion. I think this was an important discussion, too. And I certainly hope that we can still strive for liberty and justice for all. I think that sentiment still is, as we've said, is still deeply important to us, but it's not something that we're choosing to say right now as a council. Okay, so having said all of that, it is 9:27. Should we, I think we could probably take a break till 9:35. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right, we'll be back at 9:35. Right. Thanks, everybody. Okay, it is 9:35, and we have, I'm going to go back and look here, four items to get through. One, I would really, I would really appreciate not going past 10:00 tonight, which really means wrapping up at around 9:50. So I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's doable, team. Yes, Dan?
I'm just, I'm happy to run through really quick the flag update, because I think I've addressed most of the issues, and I can probably do it in under five.
Okay. I kind of want to believe that we can do this, but I don't know. We'll see. So Donna, go ahead.
I'd like to change the order. What if we put the tax stabilization last? And if we don't have time, fine. There's nothing pressing about it.
Sure. I think that's a great idea. Okay, so we'll start with the flag policy. Dan, go ahead.
Okay, so the version that you have most recently reflects a couple of changes. One is the changes that Donna had asked about, sort of taking out the mayor as a separate part of the council. So now it's very much the council itself is the entity that approves it. I tried to clean this up a little bit. The second big change, actually, there's three big changes. The second big change is the, where special flags are to be displayed. And this is based off a conversation that I had with Bill, which is, there are four flag poles in front of City Hall. There are the three that are clustered around the police and service members monument. And then there's one that's actually right in front of Bill's office in City Hall that stands alone, needs a little bit of repair work with a rope. But Bill and I were talking about that and thought that might be a good place to have the special flags. That way, the three flags on the right side would display the American flag, the state of Vermont flag, and the city of Montpelier flag. And that would just simply be that permanent display. The flag on the left would then be the special flags that we would approve. I've kept the language very much as far as the type of approval process that we would go through and when we determine these type of flags. So that's the other, that's the other change. The third change came out of a thinking about when we put the flag at half mast and being very clear and specific. So what I did was, I, this is probably the section I changed the most in drafting, in thinking about sort of people's feedback, which is I simplified it so that it no longer has, goes through all the reasons why the American flag might be put down. It just simply says that any, you know, any call by the proper federal or state authorities will cause the flags to be flown at half mast. And just leave it at that, the flag code, state flag protocol, let that control. And then it says, the change I had made was that in addition to any federal or state protocols or directions, the mayor or designee may order the city of Montpelier flag to be flown at half staff for one week under the following circumstances. And then I outline on the death of any of the following individuals, the Montpelier mayor, ex-mayor, mayor-elect, current member of City Council or city clerk, current head of any city department, any other local official, city employee, or other individual deemed by the mayor to have made significant contributions to the benefit and welfare of the city and citizens of Montpelier. And then the other reason why maybe flown to half mast would be any instance where a city of Montpelier employee has been killed in the line of duty or has died as a direct result of injuries incurred while in the performance of official duties. And it says that the, then the part three says, "The city manager shall state the reason or name of the individual and whose honor the flag or flags have been lowered to half staff in his or her weekly report." The idea behind this and giving the mayor this power is to avoid what I think would be an uncomfortable situation, which is, say, Jane Smith dies, and some people on City Council think, you know, Jane Smith deserves to have this flag flown at half mast. And the other half of City Council goes, no, anyone but Jane Smith. Don't like her. The last thing anybody wants is to have a debate over whether or not the flag should be flown to half mast for deceased Jane Smith. Certainly not her family, certainly not the community, certainly not any counselor who might be in the awkward position of arguing against it. Let's make it the mayor who makes the call, you know, give her the authority to do so. It's really just an act. And what I would say is that this is meant as a modest sort of tip of the hat, sign of respect to somebody in the community, and we should be looking broadly. It doesn't cost us anything to put something at half mast. It doesn't. I think it's a sign of respect for people who contribute to the community, and we shouldn't narrowly define what those contributions mean. Does it mean somebody who contributed a bunch of money to the city, who was a wealthy business person? No, not necessarily. I mean, that person may make contributions, but that person may not have. That person may have just been a wealthy person who happened to live in the city of Montpelier. It should be for people that make contributions, and we should be looking at that broadly, whether it's somebody who just simply put in 25 years and was a great, well-known community person, you know, in his or her function as a city employee. And I think that, you know, that should be left to the mayor, and the mayor can make those decisions. And if the mayor fumbles those decisions, well, that's what the political process is for. The voters, I don't think, will make that decision whether or not to retain a mayor strictly on this, these decisions. But it's just, I think it's a part of the mayor's duty, and it avoids those debates. So that's the flag policy in a nutshell. I think it's, I think it's been improved, and I really appreciate Donna's feedback that I think helped shape some my thinking in how to revise this. I think it's clean. I think it's minimal. And I think it makes, you know, it takes out the decision-making process in this.
Jack?
A technical question. Thanks, Dan. I think this is a real improvement. I think the technical question I have is, is the, is the separate flag pole that's in front of Bill's office shorter than the other flag poles?
So I was just about to weigh in on that. Since I've had the conversation with Dan, we did realize that it is taller, and we cannot fly the special flags higher than the U.S. flag. So we're actually looking at what, so we're now in a conjundum where the U.S. flag and the state flag can only fly on left-hand side of the building, and we can't fly anything else on this flag because they would be higher than the U.S. flag. So we have an unusable flag pole. So we're looking at what the cost would be to replace it with a shorter one. So I would suggest that the policy is just slightly amended to say either this flag pole or replacing the city flag as we sort our way through.
Okay.
Because we can't use this one really for any reason at this point.
I'd be perfectly comfortable with that adjustment. That's a very funny, because you know, the whole reason the flag was on the left side, as Bill explained, was somebody made an error when they were refurbishing the plaza, and they put the flag pole on the wrong side of the building, where it's, you know, it's supposed to be on, if you're facing out from the building, it's on the right side. And they put it on the left and didn't realize it till after the pole was installed, right?
Right.
Interesting. Did not know that.
And we put up the new poles. And because this one's taller, we can't use it.
Other comments on this? If you're happy with it, then we should just keep going. Jake?
I'll just say, yes, I appreciate Dan's efforts and Bill's efforts to make this happen. I'm totally happy with it. And also, Bill, check with Andrew LaRosa in the school district because the Union Elementary flag pole came down, and they're not putting it back up. When we did the playground, it's going to go back around the building. There's going to be a new one. So there may be an extra flag pole stick sitting around that we might be able to use. Just saying.
Depending on the height.
Donna?
I just want to thank Dan for all his wonderful edits. And I'd like to make a motion that we accept the City Council flag policy as presented.
With the minor amendment about either the other flag or...
Yes.
I heard you say that.
Yes, yes.
And then Jack is nodding in agreement. So any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, so the motion carries unanimously. So we are on to the coronavirus updates.
Tax stabilization.
They moved that, Bill? We moved it to the end.
Oh, we did. Okay.
Yep, yep. So, yeah, Cameron?
I will be very brief. I do want to update you on Leighton Street. The regular fences should be going up on Thursday. We have ordered some special fences that are a little more, a little larger and more visible. Those should be getting here either Friday or Monday. The delay is really COVID-related, honestly. So we will have fencing and cones up on Thursday, so businesses can expand into the street over the weekend. And then should have our more sturdy, permanent fencing there up no later than Monday. So that's our current timeline. I'll just briefly go through my memo, pointing out some highlights. Just calling out, there has been rapidly increasing cases of COVID-19 throughout our country. This is a really delicate time for our state. We're still trending in a positive way right now, but we've seen all over the country that that's a pretty delicate balance. So just reminding folks to keep your masks on and practice six-foot physical distancing. We did have some state updates beginning July 1st. A couple of new states that have been approved that have counties that have a low enough case count that they can come to Vermont without quarantine, only by driving. If you travel any other method, you still have to quarantine. That includes Pennsylvania, Washington, Maryland, New Jersey, Delaware, Ohio, Virginia, and Virginia. The ACCD and Department of Taxes announced that they have a new economic recovery grant. That went live on Monday. I know quite a few folks have already applied for that. It is a max $50,000 grant that goes to businesses that have been harmed by the COVID-19 pandemic. It's sort of a recovery grant. So that's live currently. I think you heard a little bit earlier in our legislative discussion that there is another grant. I think that's going to come through the agency of administration, and that is for municipalities. So we're looking for more information on that. They haven't given us a timeline on that, as far as I've seen yet. So we will keep you updated on our attempts to get money. They also, on July 7th, ACCD released new guidelines for colleges and university campuses. All students will now be required to be tested upon arrival, and they have to sign a code of conduct agreement. And colleges have been required to reduce their density in And colleges have been required to reduce their density in classrooms and other congregate areas. I have a few city updates. Our playgrounds are now open under guidance of the state. It is used at your own risk and we are installing sanitizer stations to make that easier for folks to clean before and after they play on the. Playgrounds. As a note, city-owned playgrounds are the ones next to the poolhouse and behind the senior center. This is a tentative plan, but right now Parks is still currently planning for. Holding a limited form Park-a-palooza, we're still in the works of planning that, what it would look like to make sure that it has. Fits all the state guidelines, but and we'll share that plan with you when it is completed, but I'm I'm happy with how that planning is going and how. We're going to be implementing safety procedures, I think it will be a great opportunity for folks to get out of their house into our parks. And I'm sorry, hold on. And have an event to look forward to. The city hall building is open on Tuesdays and Thursdays from eight to four. That's gone well so far, we've heard no negative feedback, but it's only been, you know, a few days at this point. But otherwise, that's going well. And I guess I will just skip ahead to say we're still doing well with our communications with the community and we're still getting. Averaging just under a thousand. Interactions with all of our social media posts, so I think that that's going really well, we're continuing posting the weekly reports on to. Front porch forum, which was honestly a weird oversight, but it's just one of those that. Happens and we fixed it and people have given some really positive feedback for receiving that information in a different format. Does anyone have questions? I know, and it feels like this gets shorter and shorter, but it's bizarre because I feel like we're operating within a new normal. And so there's less things to really report because we're just sort of pulling the line on this. And the state has slowed down updates a little bit, but I'll keep you abreast of the grant opportunities that we've been finding.
Connor.
I just want to thank city staff, BBW, the fire department and the city manager's office for the Langdon Street closure. I think like every time you tried to build it, something else came up, but you were very creative and. I know it's gonna mean a lot to the businesses to get that up and running this weekend.
Agreed. And yeah, thanks for. Working on. Other things like Park-a-palooza and getting things getting back to a sense of normalcy. Okay, so. The next item would be the TKS discussion and I because we are skipping. The 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 second July meeting. And this is an item for which the clock is ticking, I feel like we should. At least just get an update from Bill and maybe like just run through like your one-sentence reaction. You know what I mean, like what do you, how do you feel about it real quick? So Bill, go ahead.
Sure, and I tried to, I tried, thank you, I I tried to address this pretty succinctly in the cover memo, so. Most everything that needs to be said is there. Obviously, we have a December one deadline to to deal with this property with regard to the state and we have to pay. Hundred and thirty thousand dollars or they need to cap recapture hundred and thirty thousand dollars in. Federal highway funds. And for the if people want more background on that, we have to give it to them, not right now. So really, the options, there's really three choices for us, one, we pay them hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We then own the property outright, we're we're clear of our obligation to them. We can use it as we see fit. And we can sell it at a later date and retain any profits or absorb any losses. We can sell the property now in conjunction with the state, we can tell them we'd like to sell it as a way to pay you back. And they would partner with us on that and there's a process that they would use, an open public process, which is fine, we should do it that way anyway. But in that case, if we make over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, the state keeps all those additional proceeds. Which go for federal funding. If we if we don't, if we have a shortfall, the city still has to make up the difference. So under unlike the first scenario, we're on, we're still on the hook for the loss, but we don't get the potential profit in the future. So under either one or two, we still have the same loss risk, but we only have a gain risk on the first one. The third thing we could do is just say, you know what, we're not, we don't have the money, we're, we don't, we don't wanna take the risk. Just take it back, it's your property back again, it's, you know, the state would control it. They could then sell it themselves and. You know, reimburse themselves, they could use it for whatever transportation purposes that they saw fit, they can make it parking, they could put a salt pile there, they can, you know. We would lose control of the person. So. So those are our choices. Now, from a business perspective, to me, the smartest choice is to buy it. Because then we have full control of everything and we have, you know. We have the same downside risk, but we have an upside, potential upside benefit. The problem is, we don't really know right now, you know, we're just cutting one point four million dollars off our budget, where are we gonna get a hundred and thirty thousand dollars? My purpose for putting this on the agenda. Was simply to get this back on our radar. Excuse me. And to see if you all had any preference, my recommendation is that we buy it. If if that's what you'd like to see us do, then the direction would be that we come back with an analysis at the next meeting in a month. And say, here's our best shot at how we think we could find the money. If you would rather do one of the other two, then we'll set those wheels in motion.
Okay, Dan.
Bill, has there been any appraisal of the the value of the lot?
There was when we first did this, which is partly how this number came about. It gets a little, and that is something we would look at, it's a little bit more complicated because when we purchased this lot. It was one of three lots, they've since been re-sub, as you probably know, they've been re-subdivided into two lots. So the combined lot. Is more valuable that because that does actually includes the parking lot in the back. So we could always re-subdivide it back maybe. To represent what it was, but. At any, at any rate, we had a deal to sell it for. Three hundred and some odd thousand dollars with the Moat Trust, I'd have to get the exact number and it would have more than repaid the state interest and. At that point, the balance was gonna go into the car lot project.
Right, I I I mean, I ask it, you know, because I think I think there's a number of of strong reasons to purchase, to find a way to purchase the lot. Which is, you know, it's it's a key parcel as you come into town on Main Street. You know, to have the ability to control what goes there. I think is is critical, whether it's a park, whether it's a commercial building, whether it's. Parking, whatever we choose to put, you know, as you pointed out, if we own it, we can decide what that is. As opposed to if somebody else owns it like the state and decides to put a salt pile there. Or railroad car holding containment center there. You know, anything else that that, you know, we would not, we might not want. But it it strikes me that the one sort of risk is, you know, if we put in a hundred and thirty thousand and we can't get that hundred and thirty thousand. Out of it, you know, you, we we overpay for the lot. And that would be simply, I'd I'd wanna know whether that's sort of maintained its its value, if not grown.
But we also, we have that risk. If we sell it with the state and we don't get a hundred and thirty thousand, then we still have to pay the shortfall.
Right, no, I under I understand that, I mean, it's just, I think it's just something that we can see if we can calculate, you know, and.
It was, there was an appraisal done on the new combined lot, it's it's old now, but I can find it. And it's it's well in excess of this now, I wanna say three hundred something.
Okay, then, you know, I.
And I'll I'll get that number for it when we discuss this at the next meeting.
Otherwise, and I see that as a minor point, I I I really think it it, I fully support purchasing this lot if we can.
Jay then Donna.
Sure, I I just wanna say that I I fully support Bill's recommendation that the city, well, that he. You know, researched the the financial feasibility of the city purchasing the lot. To echo what Dan said, I think that it is a really key and important piece of property as people come right into the city. It's a piece of property that has access to the river and we have very few of those. Available to us as a city to think about how we might use them and obviously. Feels like a lifetime ago, but it was a couple of months ago that we were talking about the downtown core master plan. And this was certainly a key property in talking about. Building connections to the rivers and green space and particularly a riparian buffer around the rivers for the city, so. I just wanna reiterate what Dan said and supporting Bill's recommendation that we move forward with the feasibility of purchasing the lot.
Thank you, Donna.
Yeah, and I I look at the council and Anne and I were the only ones on when this started and it was such a different story going on. But I've definitely continued my commitment to buy the lot and control it, whether that's park or building on it or selling it. But I think we don't have any options, good options without trying to find the money to buy it. So I support buying it for sure.
Well, Jack.
I agree with what's been said, I've. We've seen, I don't know what should go there, but we've seen some very attractive ideas, both in the. Area of real estate development and in parkland and. The only way we maintain those options and the ability to control it is to buy it if we can. So I'd like to see us try to do that.
Connor.
Yep, I agree too, it's like going around the Monopoly board and you only have like two hundred bucks, but you gotta buy Park Place if you land on it, right?
Good analogy. Lauren, you wanna, you you don't have to say to me if you don't want to.
Yeah, no, I I just agree with the general sentiment and also was excited by some of the designs we saw and having the ability to. You know, really think critically about that piece like right in a. Important part of our downtown, makes a lot of sense to me, so support that move.
Yeah, I agree, I think the interesting question will be what. You, what city staff comes up with as a recommendation for how we go about purchasing it? I mean, one possibility is that we bond for it, as far as bonds go, that would be a pretty small bond and yet not sure that. There's public appetite for that, I think we. We may need to ultimately make a decision about if that's the direction we go, but I'll also be curious if we end up. If one of the options is taking it from the FY twenty-one budget, then. Or do we take it out of reserves? Well, if we take it out of twenty-one budget, where does that, what get, what further gets cut? Or do we take it out of reserve if we can? I think we could, but anyway. So is that cleared up direction there, Bill? Okay, super duper.
Absolutely, I guess the only thing I'd say is that it's probably more like Oriental Avenue than Park Place.
Fair enough. So.
Vermont Avenue.
Oh, Vermont Avenue.
No, no, it's the orange pieces, you always have to grab the orange block in Monopoly.
I'm sorry, I I'm sorry, I used this analogy.
Sure, that was Park Place right there, that's all.
Suddenly I have this desire to play Monopoly with you all, but in another time.
Retreat.
Exactly, or we'll have to warn it though, you know, obviously. So I think that, so we're, that was a great suggestion about putting off the tax stabilization. Piece, it's not exactly urgent, so we'll put that on a on a future meeting, no?
Could pass it a minute, right, Jack?
Is it, is it controversial? They even have comments about it? I don't think it's controversial either, to be honest. Does anyone have some either objections or suggestions? Okay, go ahead, Donna.
I just found it a little confusing because instead of striking, you had two policies, so I didn't see it all that different. And I wasn't one of the ones who was really pushing for it, so. Does anybody on the council, remaining on the council, was really looking to change the tax stabilization policy?
Yeah, I was as well.
And you think this doesn't?
Yeah, I think it was, it was clumsy, one, there were a number of things that were clumsy about it, so what we tried to do is, you know, Jack. You know, feel free to jump in here, was to make it pretty simple, so now there's really just one, if you get tax stabilization, you get it for five years for fifty percent. There's none of this, let's decide how much they get. And then there's very clear things that you can pick up an extra year if you do them. And those are really where the things that I think the council had said were its key priorities and I. I'm gonna find them here in the, you know, so either they deed a right of, you know, sort of an easement that we need or it's. Meet some exceptional standard or, you know, it's gonna add fifteen more residential units or, you know. So it's kind of, it's kind of a series of things, it's. Meets energy efficiency standards, it provides a number of employees, so you can get an extra year for each of those, once you meet the basic. Instead of having the council have to sort of decide what someone's earned, it's just pretty clear, here it is, here's what you get. And the other thing was there where, you remember recall the last one had a but-for clause, they had to prove that and and we found that to be very problematic. So that's out.
I thought there was still a line in there that said that.
Not in the new one, I don't believe.
Yeah, it's one of the, go ahead, keep talking, but it is still in there, Bill. It's.
No, it's after the. DRB.
Is one of the extra criterias.
I I just, I just did a word search and the only place but-for appears is in the older version on page eleven. Of the of the draft, which I think reflects the two thousand and three version.
Right. Yeah, so we we wanted to change that. And we we wanted to be, I think, clear about the recapture. And just, you know, make it a little bit similar to use, the other key policy thing though, which is what has held us up for all this time. Was the TIFT district and. The the prior, the two thousand and three policy really tried to encourage. And and reward development in the designated downtown and the growth center. And those really are all included in the TIFT district now. What we've learned from VEPSE is at least till legislature makes some changes that. If we grant tax stabilization. In the TIFT district, basically the rest of the city has to make up the difference in the lost taxes, we can increase our tax rate. And and really, they they advised us against doing that. So this policy says you can't get it if you're in the TIFT district, it doesn't even say if you're getting TIFT benefits. It exempts anything in the district. And I think for now, that's what we have to do based on what we know, we're hoping that those regulations will change a little at state level. And maybe we'll learn a better way to do it, but for now, this seems like the cleanest way to do it, so this is really dealing with properties outside of our. Core downtown to try to encourage. Development there, so it's pretty straightforward, so Jack, you wanna, you were the chair of the committee.
I should point out that it was a working group, not a committee, because the working group is not subject to the open meetings, Zach. Whereas a committee or subcommittee is. And so we specifically called it a working group when we set it up, but we. We we get into these conversations where it was complicated and. Nobody could tell whether they were gonna get the tax stabilization or not and. It was all a matter of judgment and then there was screwy stuff like. We had this but-for provision where they had to prove that they would not make the, do the project. But for the getting the tax stabilization, but. You had to have your permit in hand before you could apply and so that made no sense at all. And so it, having it be pretty mechanical. And clear is a way to to address some of these problems and. At one point, there was at least one person from the, maybe more from the public sector involved in the working group. And I think. We all thought this was an improvement.
I had. I I realize this is like a minor thing, but I just wanna point out. In the. Language and the under, I guess it would be, well, it's on. On page. Where did it go? I just lost it. On page five, it's under nine. I guess it's, well, I don't know where nine went. It's really a.
Oh, yeah, you are missing a nine.
You're missing nine. Well, regardless, it's like eight five, the net, that's the net zero standard one. So I just want to point out that the energy efficiency, well, I just want to point out that there is no such thing as the city's net zero standards. So I would recommend replacing that with Vermont's residential building energy standard stretch code or a LEED certification. If that's okay. What's that? So either stretch code or LEED, since we don't, you know, we don't, we don't have our own standards.
That would be an amendment.
Yeah.
Got it.
Uh, Jack? Yes, sure.
A move that we amend section eight, one, C. No, no, maybe it's just eight to five.
I think it's just eight, five.
Yeah, to, to say the energy efficiency of the new development meets the state residentially, you know, energy stretch standard, is that?
Stretch code.
Match code or.
Or achieves LEED certification of any level.
Okay, at any level, okay, okay, that's the motion.
Uh, Jay? Nope, you're okay, you're good, okay.
Second.
Okay, we've got a second, further discussion. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, right, so the motion passes. All right, I think that is all of our business. So council reports, I'm gonna start with Donna.
Well, I like.
Oh, sorry, Jack, did you have something?
That was, that was just a motion to amend this proposed.
Thank you.
Were you sure it wasn't a motion to include the amendment?
Good call, good call. That's, that's proper.
I had the same, I had the same question. So I'll make a motion to adopt the revised city tax stabilization policy as amended.
I'll second it.
Okay, you got a motion in a second, further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, all right, so we have a new tax stabilization policy. When we did it properly, awesome, thank you. Okay, so now onto council reports, Donna.
Okay, I missed the, making the agenda, but I would like us to talk at our next meeting about the upgrade of the parking meters. That given the parking enforcement staff, they really feel we don't understand why we need to do this. And I also feel that August is time to start making people pay again. And since we're not going to meet again, so it won't be till mid-August, but at least by the first of September. And the meter enforcement staff agrees, they really feel there are a lot of cars on the road and they should be putting money in. So I'd like us to discuss that at our next meeting, to be thinking about it. Okay, and I want to wish Ann to have a wonderful time getting married. I expect to see lots of photos on face, on your Facebook, all right?
There will be lots of photos, no worries.
Best wish.
Thank you.
Get your mayoral portrait done when you're like all dutied up.
Right, that'll be, that'll be.
Be the one that hangs for eternity.
Exactly, that'll be super funny. And stark contrast with every other one. No, um, okay, Connor?
Oh, not, not too much. Just wanted to say, I thought that was a great discussion with the delegation there. Hopefully that's the first of many conversations that's going to build a closer relationship. So that was, that was really cool. And, and then just on a personal note, I want to thank everybody for getting my back tonight during the previous discussion. That meant a lot, so thanks very much.
Thank you. Jay?
Um, just, I'll, yeah, just congrats, Ann, ahead of time. And also, I just wanted to have been out and about and, and doing things and starting to see city staff more involved. I was out at Two Rivers early this morning, the Five Home Farm Way and saw Alec and a bunch of park staff ahead of Bob's doing the, doing the, the updated inspection. And so just thankful for staff, I know we're not all back, not everybody's back, but thankful that people are, are starting to phase back in and get back to work and provide services for the city and it's, it's definitely noticed, so thank you.
Thank you, Dan?
Um, I'll add to the congratulations and I'll just note, there's an article recently, the bigger the wedding, the shorter the marriage, so keep it small.
Well, we're on a good track there then. That's really funny.
The only thing I'll, I'll, I'll raise is, is that, you know, I think we should be putting on our sort of radar the idea of public bathrooms, because I think we've talked about it before as a council. And I think in the wake of COVID nineteen, that we need to revisit it. And how that, what that looks like, you know, and, and what kind of project it, it does, it's, it's worthy of discussion. Because I don't think it's, it's, it's not just a issue for the homeless population. I think it's an issue for any visitors to the city. You know, we used to be able to rely on a network of public and private spaces that we can't rely upon anymore. And so we should be really giving some consideration to that because we want to make sure that our city is welcoming to people who want to come and spend their hard earned money and increase our revenue as a city. So I think that anything we can do to help that is a good thing.
Um, just thinking about that, I mean, I, I think that's a worthwhile thing to discuss. Are you suggesting that that's a, like an agenda item for a future meeting?
Yes, I would suggest that it's an agenda item for a future meeting. You know, whether, what type of, of action we would need to do or plan. I think it's at least worthy of being warned and having a discussion about it.
Great, fair enough. Okay, Jack? All right, thank you. Uh, and Lauren?
Wanted to share that the Social and Economic Justice Advisory Committee has moved forward with hiring a contractor to work with on our equity and justice work. So I'll keep you all posted on kind of what next steps, but certainly that's community engagement and engagement for us all. So really excited that that's moving forward and just appreciative again that in these really tough budget times that you all prioritize that and are moving forward with those important conversations. So really excited about that. Wanted to thank John Odom and the City Clerk's Office. I know they've been working incredibly hard with the huge influx of mail-in ballot requests and encourage everyone to keep up their requests so we can have nice safe elections. But appreciate the, all the hard work that's going into getting those out to people. And I know there's opportunities to volunteer if anyone wants, but it sounds like there's a lot of good people stepping up. And that just wrap up with a congrats to Ann as well.
Thank you. Yeah, well, thank you, everybody. And so I just have a couple of things on my radar. One is that I will never ask you to buy gift cards ever. And I'm really sorry if you ever got emails from me asking you to do that. I've changed my e, my password like multiple times, don't know why it happens.
Left them in your office there. Do with all the ones I bought.
For your wedding.
I guess so, right? That makes sense.
They're not your emails.
Yeah, they're not coming from your emails. They're coming from like Gmail accounts. They're just pretending to be you.
Right.
Catch one of us not paying attention.
Guilty.
So, and the, well, the second thing, more serious, on a more serious note, is just want to recognize that Chief Pete has been having these town hall style meetings inviting the public to come have a conversation, have conversations with him about policing. And I just want to thank him for doing that. I think that is the right thing to do. And I also know that those can be, you know, tough conversations. And I just appreciate that he is doing the top right thing. And if you just pass that on to him, our gratitude. And, oh, and he's got another one coming up, I think, right, in July? Yeah, tomorrow night. And sure, you, maybe you'll tell us more about the details for that, but. Or, or maybe it's available on the Facebook page, et cetera, how to, how to access that. And that's it for me. John?
Without going into great detail, the ballots are coming in and at a fast and furious rate. It's looking more like maybe more than we could absorb, but I think we've changed things around and we're going to be just dandy, but we're going to be setting records on early ballots for sure. I should have a plan on what the election, the logistics of the election are going to look like based on, you know, everybody's doing stuff differently now because of COVID. But I've looked at a lot of the other clerks' plans and I, I think I have something good in consultation with Bill and Cameron and Kelly that will work pretty well. So I'll, I'll want to get out something under front porch form when I actually get that firmly written down, but it should be by the end of the week.
Great, thanks. Bill?
Quickly, Donna raised the parking meters and, and that is an issue which we talked about a while back and has dropped. But just so you're aware, we got the, the current smart meters, if they are, you call them that, the credit card meters, about five years ago, free because they were being discontinued. And so we were able to get them, we had to chip them and install them, but we got them all free. Well, one of the reasons we got them free was that they were the old one. And so technologic, technology wise, they will not really be that functional after December. So we're looking at having to replace them and that will not be free and that's in the two hundred thousand dollar range. And, and we can maybe lease them over four years, lease, purchase, most kinds of things. But we are not generating any parking revenue, which would be the source of funds. We have been looking at when to restore parking. There are a lot of people on the streets. But we don't know how many of them are, are just employees that are parking there because they can now. They can park all day and go work at their business and how many are actual shoppers. So one of the ideas we were talking about was to go back to on-street parking, but keep the lots all free and see how that works for maybe in August. So we may need, I don't know if we'll need a special vote from you all on that, but we're, we're looking at that. But we, we'd like to get our folks back to work, but only if it's really necessary. We also don't want to create a chilling effect on the downtown. Fragile time and we don't want to create a disincentive for people to come. So it's a fine balance. We're trying to, you know, it looks like many of the other communities have meters, are charging, so we'll see. We're trying to be cautious there. We will need, speaking of special meetings, we will need a special meeting ideally for next Tuesday just at the tax rate, which is really a mathematical computation. But I won't be here, but Cameron will be here, but it really takes about two minutes. So if we could do a call in or zoom, if you all want to pick the town. So when everybody jump at once.
I'm, I'm, I'm open anytime. Would this be something to do on like the lunch hour?
We could do it at lunch, we could do it at five o'clock, we could do it at six thirty. We do really whatever works for people. Literally, we'll probably send out either Friday or Monday, the final calculation. I mean, it's really the budget that passed, the grant list, the state education, you know, it's not, there's not a lot of leeway with the, you know, it's not really much discretion you have, but you still have to vote to set the tax rate, the water and sewer rates, et cetera.
Lunch meeting would work better for me.
Lunch?
Yeah.
Lunch here too.
Yes, to lunch hour.
Noon Tuesday.
Tuesday, yep, could be e, either like twelve or twelve thirty.
Take the time, folks. We can do it whenever you want.
Um, Lauren, I'm not sure I saw thumbs up from you. What's up? Yeah.
I'm going to be at a cabin where I think there might be no cell service or internet. It looks like there's going to be a quarantine, but.
We'll take care of it. No worries. Let's just go with noon, i, if that's amenable to folks. Okay.
Thank you. And then, so Jay did mention that we did do the follow-up inspection at Five Home Farm Way and there really was no change. So I think our strategy of hanging tight and letting the other party sort it out continues to be the prudent one for us. And Lauren mentioned the social economic justice, moving forward with their process and that contract will be on the next agenda for approvals. And it will officially really kick things off. And yes, Chief Pete is having another meeting. I don't have all the Zoom details, but it is at six twenty tomorrow night. It's calling it a virtual town hall.
It is on our Facebook and if you want me to forward it to y'all, I can, I'll do that as well.
That's all I have.
Okay, um, great, I think that's it, right? No one's, we, we've finished all of our business, so without objection, we will consider the meeting adjourned, ten twenty-five. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.